Good evening, everyone. Boy, you're so quiet out there. Usually, there's more chatter when you have these many people here. But welcome to the village council meeting. It's Thursday, November seventeenth, the week before Thanksgiving, 6:30. And we'd like you to please stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Chris, please let the record show that all members of council are present.
Thank you.
I almost called you Diane. Okay, with that, we're going to start this evening with a presentation by Diane Gutten. Did I pronounce it properly? She's the Director of Operations for Wellington Cares Transportation. So please come and join us. Well, he's not used to...
He's got his setup.
No, he's not used to being here.
Right, is that what it is?
We gotta get re-acclimated, right?
The needs of the participants' needs and linking their requests to volunteer availability and managing the day-to-day operations of the organization. Like the mayor said, we do provide transportation. We have different programs. We provide non-medical soft services to residents sixty-five and older who are choosing to age in place in Wellington and Royal Palm Beach. Wellington Cares offers three programs. Our first is the Neighbor-to-Neighbor, which provides transportation to medical and non-medical appointments, the grocery store, and picking up prescriptions. Our second is our non-perishable food pantry, which was established to assist those whose monthly income does not carry them through the month, forcing them to choose between food and medication. We supply various non-perishable food, hygiene products, hearing aid batteries, hurricane supplies, and assistive devices donated from the community. Our third is our hospitality program, which encompasses social phone calls, whether daily or weekly. These calls establish a connection, ultimately enhancing the individual's well-being. Social visits engage those who are lonely or homebound in activities such as card games, board games, or conversation. Respite companionship allows the caregiver the ability to confidently step away for a few hours, knowing their loved one is safe. The organization successfully provides services to Wellington and Royal Palm Beach residents with the help of other organizations, because we do not want to duplicate what's already out there. So organizations such as the Girl Scouts, Boy Scouts, they will do food drives for us. The local high schools will do the same. Our community partners, this Thanksgiving, we are partnering with a local doctor who is going to provide Royal Palm Beach residents who are homebound and going to be alone this Thanksgiving. He's going to provide prepared meals. He's going to purchase them, and our volunteers are going to deliver it to them. So they're all very excited about that. Local church provides gardening and really light...
Muted.
Light... Light gardening and things around the outside of the house. And some of our local restaurants will also help to sponsor us, do some fundraising for us. We do a lot of community outreach, provide programs like Grandparents' Day, just to educate those around us that were here, and they can utilize our services or become volunteers. Our volunteers meet every month, and our meetings consist of bringing in someone from the community that also provides services that pertain to senior citizens. It keeps the volunteers of what's abreast, of what is out there, so that they can share it with the individuals when they're with them. So in 2014, we provided nine thousand five hundred and fifty-six volunteer hours. Well, from two, I'm sorry, this was from 2010 to 2014. We provided nine thousand five hundred and fifty-six volunteer hours, and we had a total of two hundred and ninety-eight volunteers and seven hundred and seven participants. And that was just in the Wellington community. But when we started providing services in Royal Palm Beach, we provided six hundred hours in 2021, just to Royal Palm Beach alone. And this year, we provided a total of one thousand eight hundred and sixty-nine volunteer hours, and that was combined with Royal Palm Beach and Wellington. Right now, our participants in Royal Palm Beach are fifty-plus.
Unmuted.
Our word is getting out there, and people are really wanting to utilize our services. Does anybody have any questions?
What? Go over for questions, anyone?
What is, I guess, what are the volunteering opportunities at Wellington?
Transportation, if they would like to provide transportation for the participants that have stopped driving, they could take them to doctor's appointments, any types of appointments, really. Social engagement, the respite companionship is big. We have a lot of residents who are suffering with Parkinson's or Alzheimer's, and they're at the stage where their caregiver cannot leave them alone. So two of the volunteers will go into the home once a week for about two hours, just so the caregiver can get a break. And the loved one can have some interaction and social engagement with someone outside the family. There's the food pantry.
Were you asking how people could sign up to volunteer?
That as well, and just to make sure, you guys run a background check on the volunteers?
Yes, we do. Yes, fingerprinting and background check. We have a very close relationship with PBSO. If there's anything that the volunteers or myself witness or see, we can always reach out to them, they are right there. If they go out on a call and they see someone who can utilize our services, they reach out to me and ask me to go out and visit with them and get them signed up.
Thank you.
I think one thing we did our Senior Needs Assessment a few years ago, and one thing that came up was the transportation portion. How is it different what Wellington Cares does versus the other transportation opportunities out there?
Wellington, the Wellington Cares volunteers are door-through-door service. The other transportation services that are out there will come and pick you up, you need to get out to the car, you need to get yourself into the car, and then they just drop you off at the front, which is fine for some individuals. But if you have someone who is frail and they need somebody with them, we can send two people with them. One to help them get out of the car, get into the building while the other volunteer parks the car. And then, when they're finished, we're with them, we stay with them. So they can just get in the car and go home. They don't have to traipse across the parking lot in the heat or the rain, and they know they have somebody with them. Families request that the volunteer goes into the appointment with them, so that they can be a second set of ears. Sometimes, they're hard of hearing. So they'll take notes, or they'll request the notes from the doctor and make sure that the family gets them. So that's how we differ in the transportation service, yeah. And it's free. We don't accept tips, we don't accept money, so...
Wow.
They know they can just be safe, you know, with someone that has a background check. And most of our volunteers are retired, and they're still very active, and they know one day that they're going to need our services.
They might be in the same situation, sure.
And some of them have fallen in the same situation and have reached out and said, "Oh, I fell, and now I have to go to PT, and now I need more, I need a ride." So it works out great.
May I?
Good.
Thank you. Diane, thank you for the presentation. Really important that we know that, and our residents know that it's available, and we appreciate all those volunteers who give selflessly. So we heard about the positions and the volunteer opportunities, and we know there's background checks. How do we, how does a volunteer find you?
Good question.
A lot of it is word of mouth. We do have an ad in the town crier, and my phone number is on there. And we can, you know, just, they just call me. And I go to the home, and I visit with them, and I get them signed up. It's very simple, meet them so that they know what to expect and who to expect, and I explain everything, the process of arranging a request, and it's been working. We try to keep it very simple and very friendly.
That's terrific. Thank you for all you're doing.
Thank you.
I think, so, two things. So then, number one, how old do you have to be to volunteer?
Sixty-five and older.
No, to volunteer?
Oh, volunteer? If you volunteer with a parent, you could be a high school age and thereafter. We have eighty-five-year-old volunteers, and a gentleman helped me today with computer information, so...
If they're high school students, you say they can volunteer, are they able to get community service credits?
Yes. But they need, if they, they're going into a home, or they're going to be doing something with a participant, they need to bring a parent with them.
An adult.
And they too have to get fingerprinted and background checked.
Wow, okay.
And I think the other question to follow up that I had with the transportation, is that, is there a certain radius that you take them to? Or, because we have some that have doctors in other areas?
Yes, we go outside of Royal Palm and outside of Wellington, within ten-mile radius. And we ask the participants to limit their requests to one a week. Sometimes, they might have two medical appointments in a week, and I will certainly do my best to find volunteers for both days. But if it's, you know, a hair appointment or a nail appointment and a request for a medical appointment, the medical appointment comes first, and they understand that.
Are you getting residents from Royal Palm Beach to sign up and volunteer?
Yes, yes, we are.
That's wonderful, okay.
I'm going to the communities and meeting with them at their meetings and letting them know that we're here and presenting to them and giving them the opportunity to volunteer and share the information with their residents.
Excellent.
Sorry, one more question. Diane, who covers the expense for the background check? Is it the volunteer, or is Wellington Cares have a...
The volunteers, generally, the volunteers will cover it themselves, but if they need it, Wellington Cares will cover it for them, if they request it.
Well, thank you so much for coming this evening and giving us an update. I want to applaud you and Wellington Cares. Thanks for caring.
Absolutely.
And thanks for caring for some of the residents in Royal Palm Beach.
Thank you for having me, and everybody have a happy Thanksgiving.
You too.
Okay, thank you. We're going to start with reports now? I guess we'll start with the...
Good evening, everyone. I went to the Palm Beach County Department of Resiliency, actually did a presentation, so plans and strategies related to the tri-county resiliency plans. So that has to go with sustainability and adaptation. So a lot of things that they talked about were communities with flooding. How do we prevent that in the future with roads, what to expect going forward? So there's a law covering on, and it's Dade, Broward, and Palm Beach County have all partnered together, so they'll do a lot of the stuff. This year, the presentations and, or the annual meetings is December in Fort Lauderdale, but you can go to discover.pbcgov.org/ resilience to see just what they're looking to do for the county and what they're planning in the budget. We attended Reed for the Record, so thank you HL Johnson Elementary for letting me come in, and also Royal Palm Beach Library. Thank you very much to all the staff and everybody who's there, it was great. Young at Heart started back up again, so they had the meeting in October, and it was a sock hop was the theme. Or actually, November, I'm sorry, we're in November already. Their November meeting, it was a sock hop theme. We attended the Veterans' Day event, so thank you very much to American Legion Post 367, Unit 367 Auxiliary. The Royal Palm Beach Community Band played for us. Staff, thank you very much for all your work you put into it. And also, thank you very much to the forty-eight million people who've served in the services since 1776. So you don't realize how many are there in all the different branches and their families, because they give more than we will ever know. Commons Park, we have Bryce Allen Band playing tomorrow night from five to nine. And then Saturday in front here at Village Hall, we have the Green Market from nine to one. I'm going to say, congratulations, FSU. I'm completely obligated, is my obligations over?
That's on tape, you know.
It is. And all my alumni applaud me. And happy Thanksgiving, and thank you to all the farmers that make the vegetables possible for us to have at our meals, so thank you.
Now, we're here from FSU, I mean...
Yes.
On behalf of the FSU community, I'd say thank you Vice Mayor Seminole, oh, I mean Samuels. The, I saw that we had a quorum yesterday at the Farm City Luncheon with our new agricultural commissioner as the keynote speaker, so I'm glad we all get out there, and I would recommend everyone to buy fresh from Florida. I mean, we're feeding the country, and without, without the farmers and the work that a lot of which is done here in Palm Beach County, we'd be in a lot of trouble, so that's it. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
So to follow up on the Reed for the Record, had the pleasure of reading at Royal Palm Beach Elementary School, and Principal Getty and staff were fantastic, and love the world of electronics, because you could reach out to every one of the classrooms. So in one reading, got to seven hundred students. Yeah, so it was pretty cool. And of course, the book was wonderful, Nigel and the Moon, so very, very appropriate, actually, for the, for the period of time we're in, because they finally got the Artemis one launched.
We're going back to the moon.
Yes, we are.
But we're really...
And so we talked about that.
We're going to Mars, that's, that's, we need young folks to step up and be part of that force.
You got it. And we were talking about going back to the moon, they were interested in that, but when I said, "And then to Mars," oh, you, I mean, really wild about it. So, great book, perfect timing, exciting period of time, and really appreciate their support. Speaking of supporting Veterans' Day breakfast, it, it's always, always an excellent thing, and we really appreciate the tribute, speaking as a vet, as you are. And this particular time, we really usually have good keynote speakers. This time, I thought we had extraordinary keynote speakers. And one of them, in addition to making some great points and quite, quite deeply held feelings about service and that type of thing for family and so forth, he, the major that was speaking to us was wearing the new Army uniform, which is kind of like the new old Army uniform, because it looks very much like a World War II uniform. My father served in World War II, and I looked at him standing there, and I'm thinking, "Wow, you talk about retro, really powerful." And he gave a great presentation, as did the sergeant that was there also, and of course, the color guard is great, they always do a good job, Johnny Castro is always helpful. And without him, I'm not sure, it wouldn't be the same. It's a, it's a great partnership that we have going. We have Palm Beach County Fire and Rescue out there with a ladder truck and a garrison flag. And, and so whenever somebody said to me, "Well, how do I find it?" Look for the big flag, you can't miss it. So thank you very much for that, we really appreciate it. And of course, Lou and Mike and the staff, wouldn't happen without their planning and, and without the staff actually making it happen. Speaking of Parks and Rec, you may remember last month, the council approved a special event permit for Unified Dream. That was for a disc golf tournament. I don't know whether you've ever played disc golf, but I didn't realize it was as popular as it is and as technical. So the folks come out with golf carts, kind of things, but they are loaded with discs. And each one of the discs have different distances and that type of thing, and there's even a putter. So I learned a lot, I learned a lot. But most importantly, we got some pretty good exposure for the golf courses, the disc courses that we have over there. And what I've heard is that we, we have our two disc golf courses over there are rated as highest in the state. And judging from the people that attended, they had over eighty golfers, which, not bad for a tournament. And some of them came from as far as Jacksonville. So, so pretty impressive, and...
I hope the press was out there.
It was a good event, and well, a little snag there, but nevertheless, I think there'll be something in town crier for that event. But again, our part, people talk about it all the time, just another example of an amazing facility that we have there. So Monday night, we had the November Education Advisory Board meeting, and speaking of Royal Palm Beach Elementary, that was a school that was in the spotlight, coincidentally. But you always know when the kids are performing, right? Our schools usually bring, especially elementary schools, but sometimes, well, actually, we even had the high school come this year. But you know, because when you pull into the parking lot, you can't find a place to park. And that's the way it was, and it wasn't just the parking lot, it was standing room only. There were people standing around the walls and actually watching the kids perform. The kids that performed, come to find out, this was their first handbell public performance. And, and they did a great job, but it was also kind of a, a introduction to their performance, which they did on Tuesday night with their delayed Veterans' Day performance over at, over at Royal Palm Beach Elementary School. And as you might imagine, they did better Tuesday night than they did Monday night, but it was great, it really was. Fantastic school. They got teachers who were retired, and they come back just to walk the halls and be in the environment, as referred to as the happiest place on earth. And they, they really, really do believe that, and because of that, I think, I think it truly is. It's an amazing school, great principal, fantastic teachers, really committed to that school, and the families are involved. Their auditorium or cafeteria over there was, was packed on Tuesday night, so... At the Education Advisory Board meeting, we also congratulated Marsha Andrews for reelection to the school board, District Six. And the school district representatives thanked the Palm Beach County voters, who approved the one-mill referendum item for continuing tax to go to the schools for a variety of things, art, phys ed, that type of stuff, stuff that's not adequately funded through our normal educational funding process. The vote was like seventy-four percent, which is remarkable. It says a lot about how much our schools are valued in the county, I think. And then also announced was the fact that we are going to be giving out the ten one-thousand-dollar scholarships again this year to graduating high school seniors who reside here in the Village of Royal Palm Beach. Application is open on December the sixteenth of this year and will be due by February tenth. Just want to make everybody aware of that, and you can find the application online, or you can come to the village clerk... Just want to make everybody aware of that. And you can find the application online or you can come to the village clerk's office and pick one up.
Wow, we're looking at February stuff already.
We are, 2023. It's even hard to say. Complete my report.
Okay, so I wanted to just give an update on the Florida League of Cities Finance, Taxation, and Personnel Legislative Policy Committee that I've been sitting on. We had meetings in September, first to talk about the priorities that were on the plate. And and then there was a consensus vote, and so three were pushed. And then we met in October virtually and ran and ranked the top three. And now we'll meet again in December, roughly right after Thanksgiving. And we'll talk about the top two issues. The first is property tax protection. So the Florida League of Cities supports legislation that creates an equitable and fairly administered property tax system while maintaining municipalities' ability to fund public services. And then the second issue on the table is enterprise fund transfers. So this draft statement is the Florida League of Cities supports legislation preserving the authority of municipalities to manage municipal revenue sources and realize a responsible rate of return on their proprietary assets and services. So it's interesting to sit on a committee and see how we go from five to three to two and then. So at this next meeting, we'll be talking about just one of those issues and then I'll bring back the results of that.
It sounds like those top two issues are both. The theme is has to do with home rule.
Exactly.
Okay. Which is important.
Exactly.
I have a question for you real quick. I know and I don't know, it's not the committee that you sit on, but if they ever talk about homeowners insurance and what's going on at the state level with it because it's constantly increasing and then they've already said now again, now towards the end of hurricane season and with the two storms, there are several that have already dropped their policies or business companies. So I don't know if they're talking about it at that level yet.
They absolutely are talking in a committee and I don't recall which committee it is, though. I can find out and follow that along.
It's November. What can I tell you?
Okay.
Is that it, Jen?
Oh, sorry.
No report, Mayor. Thank you.
Very briefly, the Municipal Administration Committee, I'm serving on that committee, just to let the council know that. Once again, they're looking at vacation or short-term rentals as a priority. And the second item is the issue, it was defeated last session, but it's the issue of whether local elected officials and managers should have to do the Form 1 financial disclosure versus the Form 6, which is the form that county.
That's the longer form?
That's the longer form. So they're expecting that to come back again this session and will be.
Who's pushing that?
I don't know the name of the legislator. I'll find out the background and get back to you. But yeah, apparently they're expecting that one to come back again. There are a lot of jurisdictions that are very fearful that if that happens, they'll have a hard time finding folks to sit in these chairs for various reasons. Those are the Municipal Administration Committee's priorities. I want to remind the council, December 9th is the Palm Beach County League of Cities Tri-City BBQ slash networking event. It's at the Hokey this year. And then just real quick to continue off of what Mr. Hamer was talking about, I dragged myself out of bed Wednesday morning and I watched that that rocket go up.
Saw it go up?
That was unbelievable.
Yeah.
There was so much more than any space shuttle launch that was that I ever saw when I was growing up. It was just, it's very, to me, it's very exciting. That is my report.
Since everybody's talking about their committees, I'll talk about my committee. Florida League of Cities Transportation and Intergovernmental Relations. So transportation, obviously, generally, these committees are about two things. One is home rule and asking for the legislature to not weigh in and give us help where we don't need help making decisions about things within our municipalities. And the other is always money, always money. And in the transportation case, as you know, as we get more fuel-efficient automobiles and even moving into electric electric vehicles, the gas tax revenue stream goes down. Well, that money is used to maintain our roads and transportation systems. And so the challenge on the table continues to be, well, what do we do about that in order to be able to generate enough money to keep our roads as good as they are? And they're really good in this state. And and so that's an ongoing challenge as well as mobility, looking at transporting people in ways other than automobiles and cars and things of that nature. And so something called Mobility Plan, Mobility Fees is is one of the things that the committee has taken on. And then Intergovernmental Relations is code word for affordable housing. And the Sadowski Fund, which was established in 1996 expressly for the purpose of funding affordable housing developments or units within regular developments. Unfortunately, the legislature over the past decade has had a habit of taking money out of it and spending on something else. There have been years where they've taken it all. There have been years where they've taken half. So one of our ongoing pursuits is kind of what we call no sweep. And and that will definitely be the case again this year. So I reached out to Housing Leadership Coalition and others and I said, is there anything else you want us to do with the affordable housing issue in the Florida League of Cities? And they said, if you can help us just get the money that's actually in the Sadowski Housing Fund, that will be a huge accomplishment. And of course, we've also had the $200 million bond that passed. And so hopefully, things will be looking up a little bit and we'll be able to get more of these affordable units and create some affordability in rentals and things of that nature with some of these new programs. So that's the committee that I chair.
If any, if you can do anything about the Sadowski Fund being used for what they're supposed to be used for, that would be significant. Yeah, you mentioned the bond issue, $200 million was passed. I'll just say that as we move into the first quarter of next year, I think we're gonna have, I'll have more to say about this. I'm working with folks to look at an approach or different approaches to fix this problem. And we'll we'll see what what progresses as we move forward over the next few months. Any other comments, questions?
No. Can we move to 3D printing homes?
Does it, does it really work?
It's $2,500 and they can get you in there quickly.
We need to talk about that offline. Okay, I'm with you on that. Okay, I think that completes our reports this evening. At this time, does anyone have a petition they'd like to present to the council? Now would be the time to do that. Seeing none, I'm closing the floor to petitions tonight. Do we have any advance requests, Chris, for statements from the public on items not on the agenda? Items on a consent agenda? No? Ray, you have any hands raised? Items not on the agenda or items on a consent agenda?
No, Mayor.
I have not received any comment cards for items not on the agenda or consent agenda, but if anyone would like to speak on that, I would give them the opportunity right now. Seeing none, I'm gonna close the floor into statements from the public on non-agenda items or consent agenda items. Maddy, can you give us the consent agenda this evening?
Yes, sir. Thank you. One, approval of the minutes of the council regular meeting of October 20, 22. Two, adoption of Resolution 22-33, Resolution of the Village Council of the Village Royal Palm Beach, Florida, approving and authorizing in accordance with established policy, the making of a budget amendment for Fund 001 in the fiscal year 2021-2022 budget. Said amendment represents the year-end 13th period budget adjustment and appropriates $136,500 from state revenue sharing revenues and increases amounts budgeted in the legal police and non-departmental department. Three, approval and authorization in accordance with established policy to make a budget amendment for Fund 001 in the fiscal year 22-23 budget, said amendment to transfer a total of $71,000 from undesignated fund balance 3990100 to Planning and Zoning Other Services Professional 5153190. Four, adoption of Resolution Number 22-34, Resolution of the Village Council of the Village Royal Palm Beach, Florida, adopting a revised schedule of fees and charges, specifically repealing Resolution 22-04, providing that this schedule of fees and charges shall be available for inspection at all times at the village hall during regular business hours, providing an effective date and for other purposes. Five, approval of a special event permit for Our Lady Queen of the Apostles Catholic Church to hold a Christmas village and festival at 100 Crestwood Boulevard on December 2, 3, 9, 10, 2022 from 4:00 PM until 11:00 PM and December 4 and 11, 2022, from 12:00 PM until 10:00 PM. Six, approval of a special event permit for Amber's Animal Outreach to hold a Christmas fundraiser at the community animal hospital of Royal Palm Beach on Saturday, December 3, 2022, from 2:00 PM to 5:00 PM. Seven, approval of a special event permit for the Village Royal Palm Beach to hold a winter festival at Royal Palm Beach Commons Park on Saturday, December 3, from 1:00 PM to 9:00 PM. Eight, approval of a special event permit for the Youth Baseball Association of Royal Palm Beach to hold a baseball tournament event at 100 Blau Katway within the Bob Marcello Baseball Complex. The event will take place on Friday, December 9 through Sunday, December 11, 2022. Nine, approval of a special event permit for the American Cancer Society to hold a fundraiser for Relay for Life of Palm Beach County at 11600 Point Sienna Boulevard, the Royal Palm Beach Commons Park on Saturday, February 25, 2023, from 4:00 PM to 9:30 PM. Ten, approval and authorization in accordance with established policy to make a budget amendment for Fund 303 in the fiscal year 2022-2023 budget. Said amendment to transfer a total of $16,000 from artificial turf safety surface PR2304 to playscape replacement PR2209. Eleven, approval to purchase and have installed new playground services at Veterans and Preservation Park for from Rep Services, Inc. in an amount of $92,148.82 by piggybacking Clay County Term Contract FRP Number 18-19-2, which remains valid until May 22, 2023. Twelve, approval and authorization in accordance with established policy to make a budget amendment for Fund 408 in fiscal year 22-23 budget. Said amendment to transfer $37,500 from undesignated fund balance appropriate. I think it's to be to appropriate $112,500 from a new federal FEMA grant and create a new watershed management plan project SW2304. Thirteen, approval and authorization for the village manager to enter into an agreement between the Federal Division of Emergency Management and the Village Royal Palm Beach for a grant in the amount of $1,000, excuse me, $112,500 toward the development of a watershed master plan SW2304. And fourteen, consideration of the approval and authorization for the village manager to enter into piggyback agreements with Herman Miller, Jasper Seeding Company, Inc., Kimball International Brands, Inc., Knoll, Inc., Peter Pepper Products, Inc., Exemplis LLC, Source International Corporation of Massachusetts, and Claridge Products and Equipment, Inc. under current federal and state contracts for the purchase of products for the village hall office furniture project. The total cost for said services shall not exceed $699,636.58 and funds will come from Project EN 2304 Village Hall Office Furniture.
Okay, let's go.
Thank you.
One question on item 13, whether the village manager or the mayor to enter into that agreement?
Uh, manager.
Mine says mayor.
I believe it was corrected. I think it was amended. I think you have the previous version.
Okay, that's why I'm.
Sorry, sir.
Okay. Any questions, comments on items on the consent agenda?
I'd like to pull 14.
14, okay. Any other comments or questions? Now I'll look for.
I make a motion to approve consent agenda items except for number 14.
Second.
We have a motion in the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We have no opposed. Chris, please let the record show that consent agenda was approved with exception of item 14, which now.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to ask the village manager if he'd give us kind of an update since we're talking about furniture. It sounds like we're moving along pretty well. You can see it out there. Our new village hall is looking more and more like a new village hall every day. I just thought it'd be an opportunity to get kind of an update on the progress and what the likely moving date is.
I'm gonna let Chris Marsh answer that. Well, the reason is I do remember the last time, I'm thinking we're still moving in April, the month of April, the full month of April moving in. But I'll let Chris acknowledge whether that's still correct.
It will be a little bit later than April, scheduled to push a couple of weeks.
That's why he wanted Chris to tell us.
Later than April.
How much later? We're looking at May? Because I've been telling everybody April.
We're gonna streak for April, but most likely it'll be April. Sorry.
You're breaking up.
They they still have it on the schedule for us moving in in April. There is several issues out there that that make that look not as likely today, but it's still a goal and there's still opportunity to make up time. They just, you know, they've got to get these subs coordinated and get the work going. They're having a significant issue with one major sub that that does hold up the critical path and we're hoping that can be resolved shortly.
Well, just on a visual level, it looks like it's coming along. I mean, I see the progress every day and that that's a good thing. And yeah, there's always uncertainty associated with this.
And Chris and I are meeting with with the owner of the construction company Verdicts next week. And hopefully, that uncertainty that you hear in our voices today is less after the meeting.
Okay.
Okay, all right. Well, great. Thank you.
Can we back up to that stormwater agreement? Middy, can we make it four? Because I think it needs to be the mayor. I think we changed it to mayor.
Oh, you saw my item 13?
Correct.
14, that's fine. It can it can be reflected as mayor. So with that revision, if the maker of the motion to approve will just include that modification, that's fine.
Thank you.
We have to do the motion again?
Well, when we finish 14 and then I'll go back.
Yep.
So I'm satisfied that we completed 14. So how do we want to reach back now? I know.
We make a motion.
You want to amend the motion?
Let's move on to 14.
Just give us a motion for 14, yeah.
So, okay, I will make a motion to approve item consent agenda item number 14.
Second.
Motion in the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We have no opposed. Chris, please let the record show that it's consent agenda item 14 was approved 5-0.
And I'll make a motion to approve consent agenda items number 1 through 13 with 13 being amended.
Second.
We have a motion in the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Chris, let the record show that the amended item was approved. Item 1 through 13 with the amendment to item 13, okay? All right, moving along, we're gonna go to the regular agenda now, starting with the regular agenda item number one. It's a public hearing for a second reading, an adoption of ordinance number 1031 and approval of application 22-25, an application by the school district of Palm Beach County regarding a text amendment to Chapter 20 Signs of the Village Code of Ordinances to amend Section 20-1 and 20-57 to add a definition for the term "school board informational sign" to allow for school board informational signs on school board-owned properties with operating high schools as a matter of right within the public ownership. So with that, who?
Mayor, with your permission, I did a great job, but I think I need to read the full title.
Please do.
This is ordinance 1031, ordinance of the Village Council of the Village Royal Palm Beach, Florida, many of the ordered in Chapter 20 Signs, Article 1 in general. Section 20-1 definitions to add definition for the term "school board informational sign" in Article 4 permitted signs, Section 2057, public ownership district or other village-owned property to allow for school board informational signs on school board-owned property with operating high schools as a matter of right within the public ownership district subject to additional regulations prior to each and every other section, subsection, and chapter 20 charman, and full force effect as previously adopted, providing conflicts clause, separability clause, authority to codify effective date and for other purposes. This is second reading.
Have you guys do that?
The attorney's the only one that can do that.
This must be a special class.
There is. And very, very briefly, this ordinance will allow, as the title indicated and as the mayor's summary reflected, to allow operating high school on public ownership district property to have the informational signs on their property. It's limited to the PO district.
Okay, this is the quasi judicial process, so we have to swear in, folks?
Yes, if the applicant could approach the podium and state your name for the record, sir. Thank you.
Yes, good evening for the record. Michael Owens, representing the school district of Palm Beach County.
Thank you. Can you raise your right hand for me? And Bradford, I'll swear you in at the same time for the rest of the hearing. Do you both swear affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you. And I'll turn back to the. Thank you, and I'll turn back to the council and ask for ex parte disclosures.
Staff and, and the past, the principal.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Your honor, sir. Oh, actually, I really didn't have a presentation. I just wanted to.
He's, he's, he's just here to answer any questions.
Yeah, this is, this is the second reading, so you don't.
Right, yeah.
Exactly, all right. Are there any questions? All right, see.
No, I just have one, and, and I think the village attorney can answer it. For clarification, it is just um, public, or from the school district, high schools. So if we had, in the village.
The P O district.
Okay, so if we have another high school in the village, this would not pertain to them.
It would pertain to them.
It would pertain to them.
Only if it's in the P O district.
Right, okay, thanks.
That's it? Any other questions? Any other questions, members on council? Seeing that, I'll look for a motion.
Move to approve, uh, regular agenda item number one.
Second.
We have a motion in the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We have no opposed. Uh, Chris, please let the record show that agenda item R one was approved five zero in the second reading. Congratulations, and we'll look forward to seeing this project getting done.
Yes, thank you. Very much, and have a pleasant holiday, everyone.
You too.
Okay, agenda item R two is a public hearing to consider application two-two dash four-five. An application by the B H B Investment Holding, R P B L C C. An adoption of resolution two-two dash three-two confirming the council's action. The applicant is seeking a special exception use approval to allow for recreational facility, commercial, outdoor, or indoor in order to operate a swim pool within the village shops on, on four forty-one and located at one zero one zero nine Southern Boulevard. Bradford, you ready?
Yes, thank you, sir.
Okay. I know you have to get back into the swing of things, being here.
Yeah, the applicant is seeking, the applicant is seeking a special exception use approval to allow recreational facilities, commercial, outdoor, or indoor in order to operate a swim school uh, on a property currently constructed and site planned as a commercial shopping center. The property situated within the general commercial zoning district. The proposed location is highlighted in green and the current location is, is, well, applicants are seeking, again, a special exception use approval in the area highlighted in green. In reviewing the special exception use application, village staff considered compatibility with adjacent land uses, consistency with the village's comprehensive plan, performance with the village's development standards for the general commercial zoning district. And staff has determined that it meets this criteria. Uh, the Planning and Zoning Commission considered the application October twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-two and recommended approval. And staff is recommending approval of this application, and I'll turn the floor back over to you, mayor. Thank you.
You said you were recording approval?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Does the applicant here? Would you like to come up and make some comments?
Mr. Mayor, if I could swear him in when he gets to the podium?
Good evening.
Hold on, I'm sorry.
Can you state your name for the record, sir?
Jeffrey Ringold.
Thank you. Can you raise your right hand for me? Do you swear affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you, and I'll ask the council for ex parte disclosures on this item.
Just add that.
Thank you.
Um, I do not have a presentation either. Um, I just am here to answer questions if anyone has questions. We're a franchisee for Goldfish Swim Schools, and we own and operate swim schools, uh, throughout several states. We have two locations here in South Florida, uh, one down in Margate and one in Pembroke Pines. And we're looking to bring our newest addition to Royal Palm.
Have you done any kind of, of market research to give you a notion of the potential to be successful here?
Uh, yes, sir, we have. We have, uh, on a franchise level, um, they provide each franchisee demographics for
Okay.
specific areas. And, uh, given the, uh, the demos, uh, in the area, we believe that it'll be a very successful location.
Is there any limit on age for, for your?
Uh, so we start as young as four months.
Four months?
That's correct, yes.
I guess there's no limits.
Most, most, uh, most of the students are gonna be infants and toddlers.
Okay, well, that's, that would be a really good thing. Um, before I go to public comments, any questions for members on council?
Oh, I was just wondering, uh, as far as, could you describe to me the pool structure that's gonna, gonna be there? Is, are we talking in-ground or multiple above grounds or multiple in grounds or?
So it's, yeah, that's a good question. It is, uh, an in, uh, in-ground pool.
Oh, wow.
It's kind of an L-shaped pool within the facility. Uh, it's a four-foot deep pool at the deepest point. Uh, we keep the water temperature at ninety degrees, the ambient air temperature at eighty. It has a tropical motif to the school, uh, so it's very inviting to the children. And, uh, it's proved to be a very successful concept, uh, throughout the U S and now in Canada.
And it's indoors now, so it won't get rained out. So you never have to worry about lightning or any of those things, which is a big plus.
And, and even here in Florida with, uh, a lot of pools and, and outdoor pools, um, an indoor pool concept has, has proved to work well in our other locations. And quite frankly, with the amount of water in the area is, I think, an even, uh, higher necessity for, for the community to make sure that kids learn how to swim.
I absolutely, that's absolutely a valid point, yes, which is a good thing.
I do, um, just for clarification, so I'm familiar with the concept, and I understand when you're talking about it, because I've taken to my da- my daughter to a similar location. But you're saying indoor/outdoor. Is that just for our clarification, or do you have?
No, that is just, I believe, for the zoning classification. It's, it's an indoor facility.
So it is completely indoor.
Yes, it is.
So you'll have the bay windows, um, the bay doors that you'll do, or you'll be?
It, it, it's, uh, completely indoor, glass door front. Um, it's divided into what we call a wet area and dry area. So it's the pool side, and then there's a big glass viewing wall where the parents sit on the other side and watch the lessons.
Okay, so then you will not have that, the bay door in the back that will open like the garage. Okay, gotcha. Thank you. I, I do, go ahead.
Okay, uh, so this is purely a school. Are you gonna use it for any kind of competition, any kind of swim meets or anything like that? Is that?
No, it's not held for competition or used for competitions. It's just private and group, uh, swim classes.
Okay, and, and this is, this has worked well. You know, it, it, it just strikes me that being in Florida with the weather and everything, uh, indoor pools just don't, don't resonate. Now, our daughter and son both were swimmers and, and were still smelling like chlorine, quite frankly.
Sure.
This is thirty years ago, so, um, that's, that's an interesting.
So the, the concept, uh, has worked well in both warm climates and cold climates. Um, it was founded, the first school was in Michigan, uh, but there are now, um, multiple schools throughout Florida. Uh, our group has the two in Broward County, um, but there are schools in Arizona, there are schools in Texas, there's uh, schools really all over the country in, in warm environments that, um, have been successful.
Good, wish you well.
Well, I appreciate the fact that they're indoors, because when I learned how to swim, it was sixty degrees in Ohio and it was brutal.
That's, uh, that, that's why the ninety-degree water and the eighty-degree air temperature, um, keeps the shivers away.
That's awesome. Um, can you talk about the classes a little bit? What time do you offer them, um, during the day?
Yeah, so, um, typically during the week, the first classes are at ten A M. and will run to about one, uh, one P M. And then there will be a downtime period and then picks up again later in the afternoon around four, four-thirty into the evening. And then on the weekends, it would be from about ten o'clock in the morning, um, till six or seven o'clock at night. Depending on, um, you, early on, um, as the class load is building up, the hours will be a little bit reduced. But as we, um, approach kind of our, our projections, uh, then we would be open most of the day on Saturday and Sunday.
That's terrific. It sounds like there's lots of opportunities for working parents who can get their kids there after, after school, after work. That's great.
For sure, yes.
What's the, what's the occupancy capacity? How many students can you, people can you have in there at any time?
So I, I can't, uh, off the top of my head, we're, we're still in the architectural process with this, with the drawing. So I can't say a complete occupant load within the facility. But typically, we would run, uh, as many as eight to ten classes with four children per class. And there's one instructor per class. So it would be one instructor with four children. So somewhere, if we're full, it would be between thirty-two and potentially forty students at a time.
That's terrific. Um, other events, I knew you mentioned it, but birthday parties?
So, um, at some of our locations, we do offer birthday parties, and that is kind of a function, again, of, uh, the, the class load and availability. Um, so that is a possibility in the future, but right now we would be starting with, uh, with just lessons.
Yeah, that's awesome. Last question, I promise.
Sure.
Um, older kids who don't swim, is there an opportunity for them to have a class?
Sure, yeah, there's, uh.
Because we do wanna get all our kids swimming.
Yeah, um, there's not a, a restriction on the child's age, so, um, you know, we have kids that are, uh, twelve and, and even teenagers. Um, in some of our locations, we do offer a, a little bit more advanced swim class as well for older kids that gets into more technique and, and stroke as well. But primarily, we're dealing with infants and toddlers.
And you said it's four feet deep is the deepest?
Correct.
Okay, so you couldn't be offering lifeguard classes to your older teens, I'm imagining?
We do not offer lifeguard classes, but, uh, we do have three lifeguards on deck at all times that are Red Cross certified and, and CPR certified.
Terrific, good, thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions?
Okay, um, well, I'm, thank you. You, you, you could stand there if you want, but no, what I'm gonna do is ask if there are any comments from the public, any advance, uh, Chris, no comments? Ray, anyone have anyone, their hands raised?
No, mayor.
Okay, I haven't received any public comment cards, so I'm gonna close the, the, uh, the floor to public comments on agenda item R two. If there are no other questions and comments from council, look for a motion.
I make a motion to approve regular agenda item number two.
Second.
Your motion in the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We have no opposed. That, uh, Chris, please let the record show, agenda item R two is approved five zero. Congratulations.
Great, thank you.
Good luck.
What's your timeline?
Thank you. Uh, well, we're anticipating starting, hopefully starting construction sometime in the first quarter. We're, uh, finalizing plans now and, uh, hope to be, um, submitting with the Building Department sometime in the next sixty to ninety days if, if things go, uh, according to plan, so probably a little bit after that.
I think we're gonna start having parents asking that question every week. When are you guys gonna open? When are you guys gonna open? Okay, so good luck.
As quickly as we can.
Okay.
Well, thank you. We're, uh, we're excited to open up the new location and, uh, I think it'll be a, a great, uh, add for the, for the community and a great service.
It will.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, have a good night.
You too.
Agenda item R three is a public hearing to consider application two-two dash eight-six. An application by Towercom D A B, I don't know what that is, an adoption, an adoption of resolution number two-two dash three-five confirming the council's action. The applicant is seeking a special exception use approval in order to construct a hundred and thirty-two-foot telecommunications towers, a tenor on a property currently constructed as a self-storage facility and situated within the industrial limit of the I L zoning district and located at one zero seven one nine Southern Boulevard. This is a quasi judicial process, so we'll have to have folks want in.
Can you approach the podium, anybody who's gonna speak on this item? Thank you. I'll swear you in. Do you, can you state your name for the record, ma'am?
Everybody else had to bend down. Deborah Martyhew, Martyhew Land Use Law, one zero three six, uh, Twenty-third Avenue North, St. Petersburg, Florida.
Thank you. Do you swear affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Thank you. I'll turn to the council for ex parte disclosures on this item.
Good with the manager?
Thank you.
All right, thank you, mayor. Um, as you stated, the applicant is seeking a special exception use approval in order to construct a hundred and thirty-two-foot tall telecommunications tower antenna on a property currently constructed and site planned as a self-storage facility. Property situated within the industrial limited zoning district and located at one zero seven one nine Southern Boulevard. As you can see on this slide here, that area is highlighted in red. Here's an example of the proposed monopole stealth tower.
Is that what a factory's gonna look like?
Yes, sir.
Oh, okay.
It's a flagpole without the flag.
The flag, yeah.
Yeah.
Will it ever, will it really ever have a flag or?
Won't have a flag.
No, this looks like an empty.
It's a flagpole.
Okay.
Flag is flagpole.
Flag is flagpole, okay.
We'll just call it a pole then.
We call it a uni- pole, I'll tell you why.
I, I, this, I gotta tell you, it's so interesting how we're conditioned. When I was reading this, I envisioned those things that we, other places where. Yeah, that's what I, and I said, no, they don't, I'm sure they don't still do that, right? So I'm glad to see this.
I can't say for certain, but no.
So in reviewing the proposed special exception, village staff considered compatibility with adjacent land uses, consistency with the village's comprehensive plan and performance with the village's development standards for the industrial general zoning district. More specifically, whether the proposed special exception is consistent with the standards of the village comprehensive plan implies with development regulations of the village code, does not adverse, does not have adverse environmental impacts, does not have adverse vehicle or pedestrian traffic impacts, does not have an adverse impact on public facilities, does not have an adverse impact on adjacent properties compatible with the character and living conditions of the existing neighborhood. And given that it's close to the transmission lines, I doubt you would even see this pole. Be quiet on this one. Uh, does not have an adverse impact on property values, is not a deterrent to the improvement or development of adjacent property. And the proposed special exception would not seriously reduce the quality or quantity of light air available to adjacent properties. As you can see here, this is, the arrow is pointing to the, um, area of the cell phone tower. Um, the Planning and Zoning Commission considered this application in October twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-five, I mean, twenty-four, twenty-two. And recommend approval by a vote of five to zero. And, um, staff is recommending approval of this application.
It's November.
And I'll turn the floor back over to you, mayor. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Um, would the applicant like to make any comments?
Sure, um, where's, where's our I T person? Let's see, I just make sure I click on the right. Is that it? Did that work? Can you take it from me?
I thought I, I thought, I think you're right. We, we should look into that.
Like the one, you know where Rocky's Ace Hardware is in Wellington and?
Yes.
Right there, that, just like that one, that's a good parking lot there.
Okay, good evening. I think we got the show on the road. Um, mayor, vice mayor, council people, um, I am here, and I'm here with my client, principal of Towercom E dash B, is George Davis, uh, came down from North Carolina. Um, their base headquarters is in Neptune, um, Neptune Beach, though. And, uh, first off, I wanna thank, um, Bradford O'Brien and his staff and Midi for helping us work through this the last couple of months. And I think we have a good solution for your community. I'm gonna walk you through it. Um, since the special exception is very, very tied to everything I would say about the site plan, I combined the presentations to be more efficient, um, and I'll walk you through it. Um, because Bradford already ticked through all of the code requirements. I'm gonna give you the visuals here to help you orient. So this is a broader context, um, aerial that's on your screen, so you can see a little bit more than what's going on just on the site and see that it's in an industrial, commercial area, um, predominantly to the north and to the east. And then, of course, to the west is the cemetery, so we don't have it, we're not bothering anybody there. Um, south is Southern Boulevard. It's a good thing, right? And the canal.
You never know.
You never know. Um, this is a close-up, uh, aerial that, uh, Bradford, um, just showed you. It gives you an idea, um, we're gonna be locating our compound to, uh, the. We're going to be locating our compound to the furthest building to the north on the west side. This is our DRC map, just to give you an idea. The entirety of the self-storage is a little over 13-acre property. Our compound area is only 1,552 square feet. It's quite small. This is just to show you that we far exceed any separate requirements that the code has in all directions from the parent track. And same with the next, the accessory setbacks. We far exceed what your code requires. We're not seeking any variances. And then this is an enlargement of the lease area site. You will see the tower is kind of central, but to the south portion. So we have a little bit of an irregular shaped lease compound area and with, we'll call it unipole, it's a flagless flagpole. And there's a reason for that, we'll put a pin in it for a second, to accommodate the cabinet equipment on concrete pads for potentially for users on the pole. Do have a typo. It should be a six-foot white PVC security fence. You know, we've gone back and forth on that over the last few months. We're fine either way, but it is a six-foot, not eight-foot. It will be a secured access gate. And we have a 12-foot wide unimproved access easement. The landscape plan, we're code compliant, we're not asking for any variances. There are a couple of Australian pines on the site. You'll see them with the dashed circles. We are removing those as they are an invasive species. This shows you it's 132 feet overall. These types of poles, we use canisters. The antennas are fully enclosed inside those canisters. So they're not visible from public view. And the reason we stay away from flag, flags most of the time if we can is because the wind, particularly here in South Florida, really does, when you get that elevated, it really does a job on the flags. Tatters on, they usually have to be replaced almost monthly. But beyond that, you have to light them at night. And that is spillover light, people don't like it. And it draws attention to something that, after you see it a couple of times, you're probably not even going to notice. So I just want to tell you why, because this is not going to require any FAA lighting. Okay? This aerial shows you, if you look to the line that heads southwest, that is your closest residential. It's 1,360 and some change feet away, 1,366 inches, which is about 10 times the tower height. So it's a pretty extensive distance. I have some photo sims to show you. So this is our photo sim simulation key map. We took a photo simulation from the nearest residential in all four directions. And the first one is from the north. And that is over 1,500 feet away. And it's from Pepper Grass Run. You can see, if you look straight and, um, straight to the center, where the house that looks like it's facing to you, you might see a little white line right behind the back corner. That's how far away it is. It's not even above its roof line. And view number two, it's about 1,500 feet away, south-southwest. And again, you can't see the pole. If you look, I apologize for the grids. I have a software that just likes to edit everything. And I can't figure out how to turn off the grid. View number three is from behind the Hobby Lobby. And it's over 3,000 feet away. And if you look right past the light pole, it's really hard to see, but it's back there and it's not even above the roof line again. And then, view number four is from the Costco entrance approximately 2,000 feet west of the site. And I believe, I'm trying to find it. It's hard. I, it's hard to see. Because you have all the transmission lines and you just can't see it. So we tried, like I said, we tried to take it from all the closest, because I know that's what people care about, what it's going to look like from where I live, not the commercial residence. And then, this next slide, the T-Mobile search area. We wanted to show you where all there, all those towers that are shown in green, those are all the area towers within the vicinity. And T-Mobile is already on all of them. And it's kind of obvious, like right there in the center is where we need to put a facility to be the handoff, we call a handoff connecting tower that will connect and be the handoff for all seven of those sites. And that's really the reason why we needed to go at the height that we were at. The chart that's coming up, you will see where the addresses are and the heights and the types of the facilities and the way the antennas have to tilt and this and that. That's the best location. And by having it this height, it actually precludes the need for potentially having two or three towers within this area. If like you went lower and then you'd have to space them closer together and hand them off. So the nearest tower is about 1.2 miles away. And the furthest is 1.75 miles away. So you'll see it's really, it was a perfect candidate, particularly that it was in the industrial, more commercial areas, and it was able to be centrally located. This, just for your information, it shows you all the different towers in the area. And you can see they range in height from 130 feet to 260 feet over in Wellington. So this is on the lower end of what's out there.
That's interesting information.
And this next slide is what the existing T-Mobile wireless coverage is. You'll see that this is the yellow area is the area that we need to improve our coverage. And it's moderate, that's moderate outdoor. The, you'll see on the next slide how it all becomes green. That helps us provide indoor service in a more reliable manner and make sure that we have not only improved service outdoors, but we have better capacity. Because that's really the issue these days is people are walking around with multiple smart devices and they're not just on their phone talking. They're downloading, they're streaming. And that takes up a lot more capacity on an antenna. So that's what's driving a lot more of the facilities these days is capacity. So as Bradford told you, we're consistent with your comprehensive plan. We're not requesting any variances. This is an unmanned facility, so we have no impact on any public services and facilities. We did do our TPS review approval. There's no environmentally sensitive conditions. Colocation opportunities are not available, but we will be providing colocation opportunities with this facility. We accept staff's recommendations and conditions of approval. And P&amp;Z unanimously recommended approval. So here to answer any questions. I hope this covers both applications so we could go through it quicker for you. I know you have a lot more items on your agenda. Do you have any questions, technical or otherwise?
Before, before, okay, before we take questions from the council, so let me find out if there's any public comments, no advance? Any hands raised?
No mayor.
And I have no public, no public comment cards submitted to me. So I'm going to close public comments for this Agenda Item R3 at this time. And open questions from council.
I do have two questions. I know you talked about, and you both touched on it as far as the environmental impact. And that, does that include the canal next to it as well? Because we tend to think of it just as above ground. But is there any raise admitting?
Right. We didn't, we didn't see or foresee any environmental impact to the canal system.
Okay, thanks. And then my second question is with this, because you can see that it will now include that coverage and if it's, and that it is T-Mobile, does this mean that you're bringing internet access out to Royal Palm Beach? Because currently, right now, T-Mobile does not have internet access out here.
I wouldn't, I mean, I guess this depends on how you define internet access. Are you talking about like your Wi-Fi hotspot on your phone?
Not on your phone, but you can, so for instance, like you can go through your cable company and get internet, high-speed internet?
Well, T-Mobile is not an internet company. They're wireless.
They do offer internet access, though. So it's $50 a month, you can get high-speed internet. Just like T-Mobile. No, I'm asking if they're going to now, because they don't allow, they don't have it in Royal Palm Beach or in the western areas. T-Mobile does, I mean, AT&amp;T does, Comcast does. So I didn't know if you knew.
Yeah, you want to speak to it?
Sure. Do you swear affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, sir?
I do.
Thank you, go ahead.
George Davis for TowerCom. So obviously, I'm not a T-Mobile employee. We don't have them here, they were at P&amp;Z. I believe what you're speaking to is wireless internet to home. Verizon and some other carriers do offer that. T-Mobile, I believe, in limited areas offers that. That is more of a 5G-driven technology. And I can tell you that this tower will be equipped from day one to provide 5G. Again, I can't make commitments on behalf of my client to answer that, but it should be and will be capable of doing so. All the sites, the existing sites, the ones that were shown earlier, T-Mobile has been going through an exhaustive process in their post-sprint merger to upgrade all the wireless facilities to 5G-capable. So it involves changing antennas, changing radios, making sure every tower has fiber optic to the base of the tower. That will be true of this tower.
Okay, so the, and I'm not going to hold you to it. So that was just my question is if that was something. The other thing is that now, because now as we switch into 5G, at what point, or will the towers now be capable of when we become, when we have more and faster service?
Yes, all the new towers, for the most part, with very few exceptions, mostly if they're limited by existing facilities such as access to fiber, which should not be a problem here. Those are being built 5G-capable. They're having the latest, greatest equipment available to the carriers, you know, T-Mobile and their competitors, Verizon, everyone else, Dish Wireless. Because every 12, 18, 24 months over the last, oops, excuse me, over the last, you know, couple decades, they've had to go out and upgrade facilities. So we've seen where everyone used to have their facilities at the base of the tower and just antennas at the top. Now, most of the actual signal sources of the radios are actually at the top. So that's why towers have gotten sort of beefier and what, how we used to build them, what they used to look like has changed. The footprint on the ground is less important as the ability to put a lot of stuff, if you will, on the towers themselves. Because the further away the signal source is from the signal output being the antenna, you have that latency which affects speeds, which 5G is all about speed.
Right. And I know that there's a short bandwidth as well. So the faster it is, but the shorter distance it can go. And I believe you touched on this earlier, is that other carriers will be able to utilize the towers as well, so we're not going to have another tower right yet.
There should not be. I mean, obviously, we're not in the business of never saying never. It's beyond our control, much like the attorneys you have receiving, you know, give them the same document, you might have two different sets of red lines. The engineers and their existing networks aren't exactly perfect and they're not completely aligned. However, the zoning and the property use here in South Florida and specifically in this area sort of funnels them all to the same areas. The tower is built for four carriers as it exists. Four 12-foot canisters, all at sufficient heights that give them reasonable coverage, if not their most desirable coverage. Our entire company's business is in the tower leasing. So we have master lease agreements with Dish, AT&amp;T, Verizon, obviously, our client here, T-Mobile. So it is in our best interest to aggressively market the site, work with them in good faith. And because we have those master lease agreements, there's no concerns of, you know, outpricing the, you know, the clients that we do have.
You are the first one, okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
I just, just have one. So if, so you said there are seven towers that are fed by this one taller tower?
They're not fed by it, they, they're independent, but they're all part of the same network. And T-Mobile was on all of those. So this basically goes in the middle of them and becomes another part of the spectrum.
Right, so, so one of those towers, we're seeing them pop up from time to time. They're what, 30 feet high, something like that?
Oh, you're talking about small cells.
That's, that's different, that's not this.
That's all part of the network. These are called macro cell towers. They're higher, they provide a bigger umbrella coverage. The small cells work underneath that as another layer to increase capacity in high, harder to penetrate areas, high-capacity areas that, you know, major intersections, shopping centers, schools, things of, you know, that nature.
Okay.
But they're all part of the same network.
Right, and they're all line-of-sight dependent, kind of. They're a line-of-sight dependent kind of connection, right?
Yes, clutter affects them, so trees, buildings does affect them. It's not line-of-sight like satellites, though.
Okay, all right, thank you.
I have one, sorry. Can you talk about the, the choice of six-foot fence or eight-foot fence? I know that eight-foot was a mistake. So I was just curious, what the decision rule on six foot versus eight?
We submitted at eight feet, and I believe Bradford requested six. I think, I think, we, we can go either way.
I, the, a lot of times are...
It's a high limit at six feet.
Goes to six, okay.
A lot of times are any firms that do the drawings, they have set details on those drawings that show like a fence detail. And it might have been just a carryover that it was eight feet. We prefer to choose six, which is what staff required.
Gotcha.
Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor's comment about the smaller, you know, being closer, you can get better signal and faster speed. That's what, to your question, why? Because I also work on that aspect of the industry is deploying the 5G in the right of way is to help offload some of the capacity on these really taller sites or coverage and capacity. The smaller sites are to get closer to you so that you get a stronger signal, so that works better, so that it's, it's all a network. Think of a honeycomb, a beehive, but it's all connected with fiber and backhaul as well. And radio equipment. But I'm not the engineer, I just know enough to be. Talk about it in zoning. Anyways, any other questions?
Any other, hey.
Not a question, just a comment. I, it seems like it's been a long time, but I'd like to thank you. I mean, I realize it's just a non-flagpole, but there's no variance request, no setbacks, no anything. It's something that's permissible in this area. And you're putting it in somewhere that's complying with all the different aspects of the code. So I'd like to say, well done and thank you.
Well, we like to thank our client in the site acts who really scrub the areas. And it takes years to be in front of you on a night like tonight. It doesn't happen in a matter of months. So there's a lot of people that, that help with that. So thank you for acknowledging it, though.
Well, if there are no further comments or questions, I'll look for a motion.
I make a motion to approve regular agenda item number three.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? If there are no opposed, Chris, let the record show, please. That Agenda Item R3 was approved 5-0, good luck.
Thank you and happy Thanksgiving.
What, what's your?
We still have you for four.
What's your time, what's your timeline on this?
Our, as soon as possible, right?
Okay.
I guess we have to do the site plan now.
You know, along those lines, how long does it take to erect? And functional?
From the time we start construction, it's, it looks like a tower site in 30 to 45 days. The site has very little site development because there's no clearing. There's just, you know, a small amount of grading. Access is pretty much existing, so it's not like we're going through woods or anything. So the tower will probably be up from the time that we put a shovel in the ground, about 30 days later. The time that's operational, a lot of other things, as Deborah alluded to, go into that. So it'll be up there, people going, well, I don't see any improved coverage, what's going on? These things with our, our carrier clients are brought up. And at certain times, it's not necessarily as fast as they get on air. Some of it has to do with availability of equipment. Some of it has to do with availability of the, the other sites around them that have to basically be optimized and reoriented to, you know, where they were trying to fill this hole before. Now they've got something filling that hole, so now they try to fill other holes. So it's, it's not just one site that we're building popping it in. It affects those other seven sites that the councilmen referred to earlier. So there's a lot of stuff that goes beyond the scenes and incorporating it, you know, in the back rooms, if you will, and into the network before the coverage gets turned on. Because we'll start getting calls, it's like, well, hey, you know, you promised the coverage is going to be better and it's been up for six months. It could be literally weeks after we finish it. It could be six months after you finish it. And unfortunately, there's, there's no way for us to tell.
At least that's a timeframe.
Yes, it'll be as fast as they can possibly do it.
Okay. Because COVID did not help things during that time period. There were certain equipment that was difficult to get, like in other industries as well. I think, I believe that's resolving to a certain extent. But they're still, it's not perfect.
Okay, let's move on. Agenda item R4 is a public hearing to consider application number 22-87, an application by Towercom in adoption of resolution number 22-26, confirming council action. The applicant is seeking a site plan modification approval for construction of a 132-foot-tall communication tower with associated ground equipment for a property currently developed as a self-storage facility and situated within the industrial limited zoning district and located at 10719 Southern Boulevard. This is still a quasi-judicial, so this swearing in count?
Yes, sir, she's been sworn, but I'll just ask the council if there's any additional ex parte communications on this item.
No addition.
Thank you.
I do have a presentation. It's not different than the applicant's presentation that they gave on the site plan. All I can add to it is that the Planning and Zoning Commission did approve this application and staff is recommending approval of this application.
Okay. I guess that's good. Does the applicant want to make any comments?
I try to condense it to be efficient.
We're covered already?
They're kind of inextricably, you know, intertwined, so.
I will see if there's any public comments. Was there any advanced comments? Any hands raised?
No, Mayor.
I have no public comments, card submitted to me, so I'm going to close public comment on agenda item R4. Comments from council? Is there no questions or comments? I'll look for a motion.
I make a motion to approve regular agenda item number four.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We have no opposed. Chris, let the record show that agenda item R4 was approved 5-0. All right, good luck to all.
Now I can say happy Thanksgiving.
All right, agenda item R5 is approval and authorization for the village manager to enter into a cost agreement with Bain Street at Tuttle Royale. For Tuttle Royale Development Review Cost Recovery for several development applications affecting the master Tuttle Royale Development. You want to give us some input on that?
Sure. At the last council meeting, council heard a presentation from Tuttle Royale representatives and requested an expedited process. Since then, we have come up with a method to reduce the number of days from 21 to 14 as it relates to staff's review time. This doesn't apply to outside agency review times, but it will apply to ours in the way we set up the TSR meetings. We came up with an agreement, presented it to the developer. They did approve the agreement and returned it to us yesterday with the deposit. So we're recommending approval.
Does the applicant choose to make any comments?
For the record, Brian Tuttle. Thank you for doing the agreement.
Okay, thank you. Before we take comments from council, we have any comments, advanced comments, public comments, Chris? Do we have any hands raised?
No, we do not, Mayor.
I have no comment cards submitted to me this evening, so I'm going to close public comment on agenda item R5 and look for comments from council, questions?
I just had a quick question regarding this, and the village manager can answer it. Is, for clarification, this is approving the timeline that we've set forth? So, because my question was, is where are we in the process? If we've asked, if we've been asked for this accelerated timeframe, have we met mile marker number one yet since it's been a month? Or is this approving the timeline that was set forth? So when we come back in December, we should see some sort of movement?
As you know, the project is in process now. On the agenda tonight, you have the first applying the land use to its property in a later agenda item. And then later on, the last item on the agenda is of changing our zoning code to allow the zoning for this land use. And they are already in the process, they have already submitted. And this will help all the TSRs going forward. And that's reducing it. Our code requires staff to provide written comments within 21 days. This agreement says that those written comments will be provided in 14 days.
Any other questions? Seeing that, I'll look for a motion.
I make a motion to approve regular agenda item number five.
I have a motion and a second, all in favor? Any opposed? We have no opposed, I knew it was going to do it. Got me, I was doing it. Chris, I'm sorry.
Don't worry, Chris, he'll send you a big Christmas gift this year, just for that.
Okay. Please let agenda, please let the record show agenda item R5 was approved 5-0. Thank you. Okay, agenda item R6. Public hearing to consider application number 22-98, an application by Urban Design Studios in resolution number 22-31, confirming council action. Applicant is seeking a master plan approval to modify the Village Royale Tuttle, Village Royale Tuttle Royale master plan to add approximately 9.289 acres and special exception approval to add the additional 9.289 acres to the planned commercial residential development for a property located at the south side of Southern Boulevard, approximately 0.27 miles west of State Road 7. This is a quasi-judicial process, so who would like to be sworn in?
Thank you, can you state your name for the record, sir?
Lancy Jean-Louis.
Can you raise your right hand for me? Do you swear from the tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you, sir, and I'll turn back to the council for ex parte disclosures.
I met with the applicant.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. The applicant is requesting a master plan approval to modify the Village Royale master plan to add 9.289 acres and a special exception approval to add the additional 9.289 acres to the planned commercial residential development.
I don't, I'm sorry to interrupt, but I still have the telecom tower on my screen.
Yeah.
Me too.
I still have the telecom tower, the last thing on the screen. He's going through a thing and I don't see it.
It was up early.
He just didn't update it.
It's the right picture.
It's the right picture, but it's the wrong.
He updated it early.
Not a hundred, there wasn't 100% cut and paste there.
One title, one title. Is that what they're saying, the one title?
Yes, because if you look at where it is, I understand that. I'm looking for the, right.
No, we can see it, it's just the title of the slide.
It's just got a bad thing on it, I.
Didn't get updated.
It's November.
Thanksgiving break, yeah?
I see the bridge, I'm good. I know what I'm looking at now.
Okay, where was I? The additional acreage will bring the total acreage for the master plan to, from 156 acres to 165.371 acres. Master plan contains six pods, two of which are proposed to be developed as multifamily residential, two of which are proposed to be developed as mixed-use social center to include residential and non-residential uses, one is proposed to be developed as a single family and one is to be deeded to the village as a public park. Development also includes a track that we developed as an internal roadway. The slide illustrates the location of the 9.289 acres that is proposed to be added to the current overall master plan. The overall master plan and special exception use for planned commercial residential district is in conformance with the village's requirements for the assigned zoning districts. Therefore, staff is recommending approval of this application and the Planning and Zoning Commission approved this application. With that being said, Mayor, I'll turn the floor back over to you, thank you.
Okay, would you like to make any comments?
Bradford covered everything on the master plan, so no further comments.
You satisfied with this presentation? Okay. Before we take comments from council, do we have any public comments in advance? No? Ray, any, any hands raised?
No, Mayor.
Okay. I've not received any public comments this evening on the agenda item R6, so I'm going to close public comments at this time. Now with that, comments from members on council? General comments from council, I'll look for a motion.
Motion to approve regular agenda item R6.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We have no opposed. Chris? Please let the record show that regular agenda item 7 was approved 5-0. Moving right on, regular agenda item 8. Is a public hearing?
We should be seven.
I'm sorry, I jumped, I jumped one ahead. Let the record show that regular agenda item R6 was approved 5-0. Thank you. Regular agenda item R7. It's a public hearing to consider application number 22-97, an application by Urban Design Studios and approval of ordinance number 1032. The applicant is seeking a change of land use designation for 10 tracts of land totaling approximately 31.846 acres from the village, from the village's commercial land use designation to the village's mixed-use social center designation, land use designation. And for five tracts of land totaling approximately 9.289 acres from the Palm Beach County's LR2 low residential land use designation to the village's mixed-use social center land use designation, located on the south side of Southern Boulevard, approximately 7 tenths of a mile west of State Road 7. And with that, this is not quasi-judicial, so.
No, but I do need to read the title, and if I could, Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
It's ordinance number 1032, an ordinance of the Village Council of Village Royal Palm Beach, Florida, adopting an amendment to its comprehensive development plan in accordance with the mandate set forth in section 163.3187 et sec Florida statutes pursuant to a privately initiated application number 22-97 SCPA, which provides for an amendment to the village future land use map designating 41.135 plus or minus acres, more or less of real property as mixed-use social center, which property is located on the south side of Southern Boulevard and approximately 0.27 miles west of State Road 7, US 441, informally known as the Southern Boulevard Properties Pod 6, further providing for transmittal to the state land planning agency, providing a conflicts clause, a severability clause, providing an effective date and further purposes.
Thank you, okay. Would you like to make any comments? Bradford, I'm proud you're on.
Great. Again, this is not a cell tower application, so just.
I'm glad we cleared that out.
So the applicant is seeking a future land use map amendment to change the land use designation for 10 tracts totaling approximately 31.846 acres of land from the village's commercial land use designation to the village's mixed-use social center land use designation and for five tracts of land totaling 9.289 acres from Palm Beach County's LR2 residential land use designation to the village's mixed-use social center land use designation, located on the south side of Southern Boulevard. And that, if you look at this slide, that area is here in purple and hashed. The village council on September 18, 2022, adopted ordinance number 1028 in order to amend the village's comprehensive plans future land use element to add an entirely new mixed-use social center land use designation. The intent of the amendment was to create a future land use designation that allows for innovative, quote, innovative and urban mixed-use developments that provide integrated, vibrant, compatible and complementary uses within a single development. The applicant contends that the map amendment is justified since it will, quote, create efficient and viable opportunity to support the village's demand for a diversity of housing stock options. Excuse me, through the site design, the project will maintain and enhance the community character and be consistent with the scale of the neighboring residential pods in the Tuttle Royale master plan. To the contrary, the development of this site will complement the surrounding area by maintaining a high level of aesthetic appeal, providing adequate buffering and separation by offering multifamily residential housing opportunities as well as entertainment, social activity, recreation and community in the village. The location of the proposed development is consistent with the development pattern of the surrounding area. And similar styles of multifamily development have been approved by the village. The proposed MXS development is the most logical transition between residential apartment pod densities that surround the site. The site's commercial office and recreation densities will also serve the entirety of the 165.53-acre master plan. The site will be developed concurrently with the needed infrastructure and facilities. Staff generally agrees with the applicant that the overall, that overall the proposed future land use amendment from Palm Beach County's low residential and the Village Royal Palm Beach commercial land use designation is consistent with the village's comprehensive plan, compatible with adjacent future land uses. It meets all relevant concurrency level service standards. Finally, the proposed land use amendment package is consistent with the requirements of chapter 163 of Florida statute, concerning the requirements for the processing of future land use amendments. And therefore, is recommending approval of application 22-97 and ordinance 1032. The local planning agency will consider this application in ordinance 1032 on December 13, 2022. With that being said, Mayor, I'll turn the floor back over to you, thank you.
Okay, thanks Bradford. Would you like to make comments, sir?
And I'll also be reserving my presentation for the specifics on the code. But again, as Bradford mentioned, this is just implementing the zoning or the future land use category that created August 18, 2022.
Okay, thank you. Chris, if we have any advanced comments on the agenda item R7? Ray, we have any hands raised?
No, we do not, Mayor.
I have not received any comment cards on this agenda item R7, so I'm closing public comment on it at this time and open for comments from members on council.
Real quick, just for clarification. So the part that Bradford had highlighted, the MXS, the purple section in there, that is all the public activities and everything? Because I think we talked about like the park would be at a different location, but that section is going to be all public and commercial. The rest of it's all going to be residential, correct? Or am I looking at it differently?
Bradford, if you could.
If you want to pull, sorry, if you want to put that image back up. Now that you've just switched it, I'm sorry.
Getting it ready for the next.
Yeah.
So you can see the brown area is the, what was previously site planned for the multifamily.
Right.
And then you have the single family towards the south.
Right.
The part, the village's park is the OS.
Okay.
The MXS is what will.
Was approved.
With the code, the form of that, if that code is approved, would be a vertically-integrated commercial office and residential development with a, we call it a, within the square, then you do have a open space park-like setting in between buildings that face inwards towards the square.
Okay, so then all of that, we've talked about all the types of businesses that would potentially go in. It's all going to be in that section? So it's not going to, okay, that's why I just wanted a clarification on that, thank you.
Any other questions, comments? If none, I'll look for a motion.
Make a motion to approve regular agenda item number seven.
Second.
Every motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Chris, let the record show that agenda item R7 was approved 5-0. Okay. Moving on now to agenda item R8. It's a public hearing to consider application number 22-18, an ordinance number 1027, an application by Urban Design Studio amending the village code to amend section 26-22. Definitions, in order to revise certain definitions and to add entirely new definitions, an entirely new section, 26-95, the MXX mixed-use social center district, to create an entirely new mixed-use social center district, zoning district, and provide land development regulations for the new district, create entirely new section, 20-63, mixed-use social center, to establish sign regulations, the new MXX zoning district, and amend section 22-55, recreation requirements for residential developments to add recreational requirements for mixed-use social center developments. This is quasi-judicial, so we'll have to have a swearing in again.
Yes, sir, thank you, Mayor. He's been sworn, so that's sufficient for this item. And I'll just ask the council if there's any ex parte communications on this that need to be disclosed.
It was Mayor.
Thank you.
I met with the applicant.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. I'm going to, my presentation is geared towards kind of hitting the highlights and the things that we're adding to our code. This is, we're creating a kind of a pseudo-form-based code. And where form-based codes, they, the regulations are designed to create the form and vision that the applicant is proposing. And so, and then it's also geared towards, mine is to complement Lancy's. Lancy's, it will hit different aspects of this code. We didn't want to be redundant, but there's just some things that, you know, he's more in tune to. And so that we're trying to double-team this so that it creates a clear picture for council. The applicant is requesting a zoning text amendment to the village code. The applicant is requesting a zoning text amendment to the village code to add an entirely new mixed-use social center zoning district and supporting regulations to village code. The village council on September eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-two, adopted ordinance one-zero-two-eight in order to amend the village's comprehensive plans' future land use element to add an entirely new mixed-use land use designation. Again, the intent of the amendment was to create a future land use designation that allows for, quote, "innovative," and urban mixed-use developments that provide integrated, vibrant, compatible, and complementary uses within a single development. The proposed zoning text amendment will establish the zoning regulations, which will control the form in which a development will build out within this district in order to achieve the mixed-use social center land use designations intent. Zoning requirements, village code section twenty-six-ninety-five, MXX Mixed Use Social Center District, the propose of this section is to create form-based development regulations with emphasis on site design, building form and character, street design, to bring about a desired vision for a mixed-use social center. Section twenty-six-ninety-five, this just sets out the permitted and special exception use. Uses, section twenty-six-ninety-five, site development standards. This section outlines the development standards, required building frontages, and the required building frontage styles return many of the specific regulations that will apply to the development. These building frontage style regulations differ from traditional zoning with building setbacks which place buildings a certain distance from roadways. In many cases, fifty feet or more with the parking field between the roadway and the building. Again, that's the traditional style. The building's frontage styles require a certain percentage of the buildings to be located within build-two zones, which position the building closer to the roadways with an intervening sidewalk. These are the different styles, the storefront styles, and Lency will go through these and further explain these. The general, I'm sorry, the arcade style, and the general style. The general style is what, it refers back to the regulations that we have currently for the big box type stores. Maximum building height for residential office and non-residential use shall be sixty-six feet and a maximum of five stories. Hotels shall be one-hundred feet, or can be one-hundred feet and a maximum of seven stories. Parking garage shall be sixty-six feet and maximum of six stories. Minimum, we address the minimum yard setbacks. The minimum open space requirements, no less than twenty percent of the total site for the entire mixed-use social center. So, that was a big, big thing for, or one of the important things that we wanted to insert into this mixed-use social center. Maximum floor area ratios, these maximum floor area ratios were designed in order to achieve that mixed use with maximums and minimums to provide for some flexibility. Maintenance of common facilities, a section of the code outlines the maintenance obligation of the common facilities within the mixed-use social center. Makes clear that this maintenance obligation shall not be at the expense to the general taxpayers of the village. Minimum recreation requirements, the minimum recreation requirements are the same as what we currently have in today's code. Minimum size requirement, these mixed-use social centers must be forty acres. The landscape standards, we've established perimeter landscape buffer requirements. One of the differences is that canopy trees shall be planted along the build-two zones, storefront and arcade frontages at a minimum of one canopy tree for every thirty feet, and one palm tree may be substituted in lieu of one canopy tree. Now, as I read this while I was in my office before I came here today, I may, I would suggest that we make that palm tree something of more significance so that a sable palm or a Christmas palm couldn't be substituting for a shade tree. Maybe something where the language would state a royal palm, which has a canopy similar to a shade tree. So, when you make your recommendation, I would suggest considering that and making that part of your recommendation, and on the second reading it will come back with that type of language.
So, Keith, that means it has to be contained in the motion?
Yes, the motion, if there's a motion to approve, it should be with that edit to the document, and then that, as Bradford said, would be incorporated in, and you'll see it on second reading.
Okay. Question, real quick, is there, to that point then, do we need to specify palm tree versus another canopy tree?
No, it would basically, because in the past, we've allowed for landscape waivers where a royal palm has been counted on a one-to-one basis with canopy trees? Because if you look at royal palms, they do have that, that wide canopy, and so we've allowed that swap. I'm just concerned that we would get a swap, in this instance, with a smaller Christmas tree, just a little rinky-dink.
Yeah.
And so, I thought that that, we may want to have that inherently interjected into this code. Special regulations, ten percent of the required parking spaces shall be identified as ride-share spaces. Parking garages, twenty-five percent of the frontage of the first floor of all parking garages shall incorporate retailer office businesses. And they also shall maintain the same vertical and horizontal articulation and rhythm and incremental appearance established on the ground floor. Pedestrian crossings, not, non-at-grade pedestrian crossings shall be designed to be consistent and visually compatible with the architectural style of the MXS development. Common architectural theme, we address hours of operation, Sunday being from twelve AM to one AM and five AM to eleven-fifty-nine PM. Monday through Thursday, five AM to eleven-fifty-nine PM. And Friday, twelve AM to one AM and five AM to eleven-fifty-nine PM, with the exception of fitness centers being able to operate twenty-four hours, seven days a week. Special events and outdoor uses, we identified two types of special events that we, that the applicant would like to have at this MXS. One being the minor events. The minor special events shall mean those events that occur wholly within designated event areas on the approved site plan for the MXS, and which are made part of the regulating plans for the MXS. And no special event permit is required for this type of special event. Major events, major special events are those events that occur outside the designated events areas as shown on the approved site plan and regulating plans. And any events where private or public roads are to be closed as part of the event, a special event permit shall be required for major special events in those events. Those special events will come before council for approval. Art and public places, this will adhere to the rules and regulations that we currently have. We established some approval criteria, and the maximum density for a mixed-use social center is ten units per acre. We've added some definitions, restroom structures, pool decks, rooftop amenities, other surfaces for recreational activities, definition for build-two zones, added to the personal services, retail sales MXS, rooftop amenities, transparency. Signing requirements, the major changes there are the, their de-entry feature signs, which are freestanding monument signs may be placed per each individual collector's street, not to exceed six in total quantity for the MXS project. And six pedestrian directional signs are permitted not to exceed six feet in height and four feet in width. Again, the recreation requirements, we added some legalese to that, that these additional requirements stated the private open space and recreation facility shall be privately owned and maintained by the single owner for the benefit of the existing future residents of the development. Staff has evaluated the zoning text amendment request and feels as though it establishes zoning regulations which will adequately achieve the mixed-use social center land use designations intent, and therefore is recommending approval of this application. This application was approved by the planning, or the local planning agency, and again, staff is recommending approval, and I'll turn the floor back over to you, Mayor, thank you.
Okay, thanks, Bradford. Sir?
Thank you, thanks, Bradford.
Before he gets going, I want to, this is a, this, this, I've done land planning thirty years. This is a form-based code, it took me almost a year to figure out what they were talking about. I know if it took me a year to figure that out, one reading, you're going to not understand this. But what's different about this, and Ray, and Chris, and Mitty, and Bradford, they've done an excellent job of combining twenty different codes to come up with this. But this defines exactly what you're getting within a very small fluctuation. I mean, it's got all the little details. So, I would encourage you, as he goes through it, each section, ask him, what does that mean? I mean, because this determines what the site plan is. So, what's so important is now that this gets approved, we'll be able to get the site plan and make sure it fits every little corner of this, and it may not, but it may. But, but my only point is, this is the only form-based code I've ever worked with, and it's probably the only one in the city's code, and it's very, very detailed. So, when you're, I would interrupt him and say, what does that mean? What does that mean? What does that mean? Because this is it, this explains what it means. So, just to tell you the difference, because, you know, normally you say it's commercial, and then the guy comes in, he does whatever he wants, and the guys evaluate. But this is really, really different, so I just wanted to preface that with you, to ask questions.
I actually, may I have a quick question for you, Mr. Tuttle? Does this mean then, with this, there will not be variances coming through throughout this process?
I can tell you that we, we worked hard, ask Ray, I was very compromising. I couldn't believe it, Ray was very compromising, and we met in a lot of areas. And as of today, at the end of the presentation, I'll tell you what open items are in my mind. But there are very, very limited variances, very limited. Like, one building might need a foot into the landscape buffer, something like that. Because, for example, we're putting a ten-foot...
Should I answer this, maybe?
Maybe, a definite maybe. But for example, we're putting a ten-foot path everywhere. By doing a ten-foot path, you know, it eats up so much space, and I might need six inches of a building here, or a foot or something, but, but nothing. But again, ask him questions, because this, this is really, really important. Okay?
Thank you. Lency Jean-Louis with Urban Design Studio on behalf of Main Street at Tuttle Royale LLC. And tonight, oh, am I sharing? And tonight, the subject request before you, again, as Bradford mentioned, is the introduction of a new zoning district entitled the Mixed Use Social Center. And just again, to bring it into context, what this zoning code, in conjunction with the new land use category, introduced and approved. The point of it is to, again, allow those larger-scale mixed-use vibrant communities where residents can work, live, and play, to have recreation and entertainment options for the residents of Royal Palm Beach, and to really create pedestrian-focused uses and sort of have a live activity center where people are engaging with open space, they're engaging with activities, and really engaging with the surrounding community. Just to touch on this again, the similar mixed-use centers of this style that we see around the county, I've seen in Abaco and Jupiter, Meisner Park in Boca, Alton and Palm Beach Gardens, Harbor Side Place in Jupiter, and Uptown Boca, in Boca Raton. It's the distance that while these are county amenities, anybody living in Royal Palm Beach has to drive more than five miles to reach this. So, this is going to really be a local amenity for residents of the village that they can take pride in and enjoy and use. So, just to go back to the comprehensive plan adoption and where we've gotten to this point, the land use category that we proposed for the mixed-use social center was approved August eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-two via ordinance ten-twenty-eight. And as a part of that land use category, it specifically pointed out that the mixed-use social center zoning district would be the zoning district that would actually carry out the larger policy goals as seen and previously presented before you for that mixed-use social center land use category. Also included in that was the requirement that any mixed-use social center development had to have a site-specific designation, and also have frontage on principal arterial roads or being part of a master plan that has frontage on two principal arterial roads for the means of major connection in the village.
Can I take you?
Go ahead, yeah, absolutely.
Can I take you back to the same-as or similar-as, the examples that you offered here? You didn't say anything about City Place or whatever we're calling it today?
Correct, and I did remove City Place prior to Richard's comment just because of, we don't want to have the same sort of development of that intensity and something that's really not as similar to Royal Palm's project when that's more tailored to a downtown, major metropolitan area project for South Florida.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, if I could? And I guess to piggyback on Jeff's, and I don't really expect you to know it, but I guess, there's second reading, if you could give me the information. One of the examples you're giving here is Alton and Palm Beach Gardens, which I'm familiar with. It's right by my mom's house, I'm not very impressed with that. I think it's not a good design, it's, it's poor. So, if we want to, I, I would want to know what the difference in intensity and a comparison with Alton is. If this is going to be just like Alton, then I'm, I'm going to have some serious problems.
That's his comment, not mine.
No, no, and I, and I, no, I know they're just using as an example. But, but from my understanding, with, when I, there is one that I do have intricate experience with, and if we're comparing it to that and saying it's similar, I would hope it would be much different in, in a lot of ways.
Absolutely, and I could get some of that information from you.
Yeah, and you can email it or give it to the council, or just, because I, I would really like to know what the difference is, because I could give you a list of what my issues with Alton are.
And that would actually help if you would want to get that out.
All right, thank you.
You can make that information available to the full council.
Yep. And to get into the specific...
And to piggyback on that, at the end, if you would tell us what you don't like about Alton, that will help.
You guys, you guys can do that offline.
And again, to really frame the purpose and intent of the MXS and how it'll differ from conventional zoning, it's really main, its main intent is to allow for non-residential and residential uses to really integrate with public open space, recreational, and entertainment uses. It's a call for vertical integration and a mix of uses in a building, to be also constructed with the first phase of development with the needed parking garages, as well as horizontal integration permitted, as long as these spaces are oriented toward usable public open space for pedestrian connectivity. And to touch on that word that's been floating around, form-based code, pretty much what it is, is a land development regulation that fosters predictable results in high-quality public realm by using physical form, instead of just your typical zoning prescriptions for FAR identity. So, as you see in this graphic at the bottom, this first large block en masse is what you can get with conventional zoning. There's really no, there's really no input on the actual physical and aesthetic features of what you're building, it's just regulated by FAR use. So, this is what you get when you get the seas of parking that are fronting the highways like you see on an Okeechobee and military, and really zoning regulations that aren't implemented and aren't focused on design, and aren't focused on what, not only the village wants to see, but what a developer can expect. If we go a step above that, there's design guidelines, which, while that's not a regulating document, you see a lot of times, design guidelines are used to sort of spruce up architectural enhancements on buildings, or to call for building separations and items that might enhance the development a little bit, but again, they're not specific regulations. What happens with the form-based code, it's a street and building type that is focused on the typology of buildings, and it's focused on predictable results, and it's focused on the actual form and scale of the building. So, you have specific requirements that I'll get into later. So you have specific requirements that I'll get into later with the, um, different building types such as transparency, such as where the building is placed, such as floor-to-ceiling heights, such as, um, retail tenant widths and just a lot of really specific items that help to foster a real pedestrian and more enhanced public realm for everyone to enjoy. And here we have a few more examples of not just mixed-use centers, but actual developments that utilized form-based codes. We have Baldwin Park in Orlando, the Pleasant Hill Bart Station in California and Viebois in Oregon. And although these are nationwide examples, there are also more local examples such as Seaside and, um, the Miami Twenty-One Master Plan in Sarasota County. Specifically what you see in these pictures is a high-quality public realm where as you're traversing down the ground floor, you have these arcades, you have these architectural progr- uh, projections. You have a focus on landscaping to enhance the area and you have a mix of, uh, open spaces and public realms and the actual built environment where it's pedestrian-focused. Then it's focused on the pedestrian experience as opposed to again that strip mall where you get the parking lot in the front and it's really not based on safety as far as walkability or even any, um, interesting activities to engage with. So this is, as we mentioned before, the predictable result that we want to see and specifically tailored in our code to the Village of Royal Palm Beach. So to speak on the code, as far as, there's an extensive list of uses that we're proposing. I'm not gonna go through each one, but I do want to specify what are the special exception uses and some of the discussions that we've had with staff as far as what we do want to allow and what we don't want to allow. As far as the special exception uses, under the office and institutional category, that will be a museum and a public and private academic institution. And then as far as the retail and personal service uses, we're allowing retail sales specific to MXS, which are establishments that we're gonna set forth in the code, which if, if anything exceeds twenty thousand square feet, we would have to go to the council for that approval and any of these that do not include a drive-through facility. A restaurant with a bar lounge with live entertainment. And we really wanted to specifically point this out too, because it was important in our discussions with staff that we didn't just have a standalone bar where we're getting loud, rowdy people my age, you know, getting loud. We really wanted it to be, uh-
Young folk.
Because we're in bed by then.
But we, we did wanna focus it on, um, having that family feel specific to the Village of Royal Palm Beach. Go ahead.
No, actually, I was gonna ask you a quick, to put it perspective, can you give me an example of a building that's twenty thousand square feet? So is it like a, uh, Qdoba? Is it a Starbucks? Is it a?
No, no, no. We only, we have, um, we have, um, six tenants right now that are probably twenty thousand square feet. We have a Signature LA Fitness, which is fifty thousand square feet. It's their new lifestyle fitness to compete with lifestyle. So they'll have thirty-seven thousand on one floor, fifteen thousand on the other. Uh, we either have a Fresh Market or a Home Sense, which is a competitor, uh, owned by Home Goods. So that would be twenty-five thousand. We have the Bolero, which is a new high-end bowling disco thing. That's thirty thousand square feet. We have the Improv Comedy Club, which is twenty thousand feet. And then we have, we're gonna be doing an I-Pic Movie Theater, which is twenty-eight thousand square feet.
Thank you. So at least that puts a perspective when you're talking about those sizes.
Exactly, exactly. Those, those, those would be the only ones and then everything else is under that.
Okay, thank you.
For perspective, I think the building across the street, the two-story one is a twenty-five thousand square foot building.
The Cultural Center or the?
No, the, uh, Medical Plaza.
Oh, the Medical Plaza, okay.
Six, the CVS is sixteen thousand. The office building across the street is twenty-five, isn't it?
That's just to put it in perspective.
Thank you.
And, and again, just to reiterate that, that's for the larger-intensity retail uses where we do get that in front of the council. And then lastly, the Brew Pub or Micro Brewery, not to exceed six thousand square feet of girls' court area. And Bradford also touched on this, the maximum building height that we're setting forth will be for residential office and non-residential uses, it'll be at sixty-six feet and a maximum of five stories. For hold, the hotel on the site, it will be one hundred feet and a maximum of seven stories. And for parking garages, it'll be sixty-six feet with a maximum of six stories where it's maintaining that similar height as a residential. But with parking garages, we have more freedom as far as the floor-to-ceiling width to accommodate that parking. Now, the MXS and the form-based code specifically, you'll see them regulated by a series of regulating plans, which quite frankly are just diagrams, which diagram, di- which show visually what specific regulations that are to be applied to. Our specific MXS district is governed by the frontage diagram, uh, regulating plan, setbacks regulating plan and open space regulating plan, which I'll detail a little further, uh, later in this presentation. But I'm gonna start off with the building types. And for the MXS district, we're allowing three potential building types. The storefront building type, the arcade style, and then as Bradford mentioned, the general style, which regulates to the Village PCD standards. So for the storefront style, which is gonna be the most common building you'll see in this development, it's intended for an at-grade entrance along the public way. Um, and for retail and office uses on the ground floor, residential or office uses above. And it has substantial transparency at the sidewalk level, um, which really, uh, which really is for the activity of the pedestrians traversing on the ground level and really activating that ground floor public realm. And it also might include an awning, arcade, canopy or balcony that might overlaid, uh, overlap the sidewalk for shade and also for the architectural projections. And it can also be used in conjunction with other frontage styles. And these standards are mainly for the front and sides of the buildings. So on the right there, it might be a small font, but those are specific regulations that come along with the storefront style. And those regulations correlate with the graph that you see on the left. Um, that again, via the regulating plan as a diagram approach to show whoever utilizes this district what regulations that they have to follow. So, okay.
So in English? We understood what he said. In English, all the, the small ground floor retailers will look like this. They have twenty-foot ceilings, they have eight-foot clear paths with twelve-foot sidewalks. So all the ground floor small retailers, you know, the, the clothing stuff, they'll have this type of frontage. So that's the storefront frontage. These are the retailers with the apartments over.
And as you can see on that right, we have specific regulations which give you a predictable result such as a minimum building frontage as far as how much, how wide your building has to be on the site. A ground floor pedestrian coverage, how much of the ground floor has to have awnings, has to have, um, arcades, canopies. A minimum building separation, so you're not having buildings too close together. Tenant width, building width, floor-to-ceiling height, a minimum transparency percentage, a minimum sidewalk width from the frontage. And I'll get into the sidewalk width later, but these are all regulations that again are meant to really, really foster predictable built result and give us the vision of the type of development we want to see. So on the next slide, this is a architectural elevation of a development that's utilizing and implementing those specific regulations that we've set forth. So you can see that again, it's not just this big box strip mall style development. It really does become an engaging and interesting architectural design. The second building type that we can select is the arcade style. And this differs, this is more intended for retail, dining, recreation and to entertainment uses. And the main difference between the arcade style and the storefront style is that we do have a higher building, um, ground floor to ceiling height allowance for, you know, you have your bowling alleys, you have your, um, comedy theaters, you have your movie theaters. And this is more speci- specified to the entertainment and recreation uses that those might integrate into the MXS development. But similar to the storefront style, this style also has unique regulations that anybody utilizing the style would have to follow. And again, it gives the village predictability as far as the items that they wanna see in a development, but also gives the developer predictability so that they know what they, they have to follow. And similarly to the storefront style, this is more of an example of the architectural elevation that you might see implementing these regulations. And this is by design. The regulations are by design to create an interesting and engaging product. Now, the setbacks also differ with the MXS district. First, I'll start off that the code will require a twenty-five-foot setback generally for the entire property. So any building within the MXS will have to have a minimum setback of twenty-five feet from the perimeter of the MXS boundary line. Now, we have another regulating plan and what we call a build-two zone in lieu of a traditional minimum setback for the storefront and arcade building types, which I'll detail in the later slides. And this will be accomplished by what we call a layer system. So as you can see in these diagrams, a building and specifically a build-two zone, it's meant to be based upon the edge of pavement or the right-of-way and you have to bring your building to the build-two zone. And it is arranged from a minimum and a maximum setback that you could have from the right-of-way or from the edge of pavement. What this prevents is those seas of parking, um, that really separate the public realm and the actual built environment where building, these buildings and bringing them to the frontage creates that engaging realm. It creates that pedestrian scale and it creates that healthy realm that pedestrians can actually sort of feel encompassed by. And to get more specific in the regulations, the storefront style will have what we call layers. So the first layer, and if you guys can see that blue, is zero to twelve feet. And that is going to be from the edge of the pavement and right-of-way. And in our code, we have certain aspects that could be permitted in that first layer such as whether it's outdoor seating or whether it's, um, how much an arcade or canopy can encroach into that first layer, whether it's a landscape planter. And then the second layer, which you see, which is the build-two zone, which is shaded in red, that area is the area that you're allowed to place the frontage of your, of your building in. To again, still create that frontage, but there is the freedom as far as where you place that. Specifically for the storefront, it's between twelve and thirty-five feet. For the arcade, it's between fifteen and thirty feet. To add on to that, as far as the setbacks, we have a maintained side setback of eight feet minimum from the edge of pavement and a rear setback of six feet minimum from the edge of pavement. And to touch on another discussion that we had with staff, I'm actually gonna go back here to the arcade and storefront styles. I do wanna make sure I point this out. We also have a minimum sidewalk width from the frontage at eight feet at all times. This was an important conversation to, um, really, really maintain that pedestrian space on the ground level where whether you have a landscape planter, whether you have outdoor seating at all times, you must maintain an eight-foot clear path on the sidewalk level so that pedestrians really feel that they're the priority and, you know, not the vehicles in a development such as this. And just to really show how these diagrams tie in to the site plan and how these regulations are created by design. As you can see in the green highlighted, that is the eight-foot clear path that would be maintained from the building front line and from landscape planters. The red is that layer one, which is between the edge of pavement and the front of the building line where you have certain encroachments and certain things that are permitted in that layer such as pedestrian coverings, such as landscaping, such as outdoor seating. And then in layer two, that's the build-two zone where the width of that blue line is where you could place that building frontage. So that also allows flexibility in your design to be accommodated for the specific site, but still maintain that the building is focused and fronted on the edge of pavement and on the right-of-way. And as I mentioned, specifically setback encroachments permitted. Arcades, awnings and covered areas are permitted in one hundred percent in that build-two zone so you could have an awning or an arcade going up to that edge of pavement. Above the first story, uh, story, cantilevered balconies, bay windows, roofs or shading devices may encroach a maximum of five feet into that first layer. Outdoor seating may encroach twenty percent into the first layer provided that an eight-foot clear path is maintained as we, uh, mentioned prior. And similarly, landscaping material is also permitted in that first layer provided that, that eight-foot clear path for the pedestrian, um, traveling is maintained. And in the pictures to the right, you can see what that's meant to create. It's meant to create that pedestrian realm where not only can you travel freely on the sidewalk without constriction, but you have activity. It's activated via these outdoor seating, um, areas via interesting awnings and pedestrian coverings, um, and just architecture in general that really creates the, uh, public realm that's desired. Now, another regulating plan that the MXS employs is open space regulating plans. At large, twenty percent at minimum is, um, required for any MXS project. And specifically, the MXS project shall employ a minimum of two types of open space and these diagrams will be presented shortly after. And one of these types selected shall total no less than three percent of the total project site area so that we really do have a substantial open space type that the pedestrians and residents of the MXS can enjoy and interact with. And you can see in the picture in the bottom, sort of a similar square type that's framed by the building, by the landscaping, but it has these pedestrians and these residents really engaging community with their families, um, on a sunny day. So figure five depicts the recreation green. It's one of the types of open space that can be selected where we have a minimum size and a maximum size of one acre at minimum and that maximum, where this is meant for passive and active recreation, um, community facilities, drinking fountains, et cetera. But this is one of the types that can be selected. Secondly, we have the square type, um, that's open for civic purposes, recreation purposes where our minimum size is one acre, our maximum size is five acres. And similar, uh, similar activities are meant to be here, whether it's special events, whether it's, um, just people going out playing with their kids on the lawn, but it's meant to be an open space type where you have that minimum of three percent of the site where it's substantial that people can enjoy. And then there are smaller open space types such as the playground, which is figure seven, which is a minimum size of point one acres and a maximum size of half an acre, which is meant more in the pockets of the MXS where whether it's residents who live in certain communities, they want to engage with that. Or pocket park, which is a normal park, a dog park, real, really active open space that everybody living in the MXS can interact with. And here again, just, oh, go ahead, sorry.
Question?
No, I think you're about to answer my question. Oh, yeah, absolutely, yes. Here in the, um, the design as you see, again, it's by design that what you see in that code, what you see in that regulation can be employed in real life and in design. And you can see on the left, we have the square open space type. And the fact that the building's front this, this horizontal and vertical integration is all oriented towards this open space and towards the square. And it really frames this civic space that pedestrians and residents can feel pride with and can interact with and live, work and play in. And then you also have the pocket park on the right, which is another permitted type, which is a smaller dog park, but still usable green space for everyone to engage with. And to again, give the floor area ratios, this was approved in conjunction with the MXS land use category, but it's replicated in the code. The maximum FAR is one point three, um, for the site. And then we prescribe FARs for non-residential, residential and structured parking. As far as landscaping in the MXS, and as Bradford mentioned, um, we'll discuss that with, uh, the substitution between a palm tree and a shade tree. But, um, we do call out that any build-two zone along a storefront or arcade type has to have a minimum of one canopy tree for every thirty feet or the substitution in lieu of the canopy tree. And we also have a call out in the MXS where berms within the MXS zoning district may be permitted at a minimum of one foot in height above the natural grade as opposed to the code required three. If a ten-foot minimum multipurpose shared-use pathway is provided within the applicable landscape buffer. And then we also have perimeter buffer lifts where along the roadway or canal, a twenty-five-foot landscape buffer is required. Adjacent to a residential community, a twenty-five-foot landscape buffer is required and adjacent to any- Adjacent to a residential community, a twenty-five-foot landscape buffer is required, and adjacent to any commercial, a fifteen-feet landscape buffer is required. So, again, to connect it back to our regulations and design, here we have a landscape buffer, but we have this undulating walking path that traverses through it. And again, this is really focused on the residents and on the visitors of the MXS to have these amenities to enjoy. And that's just really showing the connection of what the code is meant to write out in the actual application of the code. And Bradford did touch on the hours of operation, just to streamline it. Thursday, Friday, and Saturday nights, open one hour past midnight. And Sunday, Monday to Wednesday is open until midnight, so that extra hour is provided on the weekend. And to touch on the special events, to really engage that space and to activate that open space that's required, there are two types of special events permitted in the MXS. The first is the minor special events, where the area is to be depicted on a site plan and regulating plan of where those events are to occur. And that will be coming before you at a later date. And a shared parking study with the submittal of site plan will be required to depict how parking works, to depict the overflow parking areas, and to ensure that the activity in these events function. And with these events, because the intention of the MXS is to have consistent activity for residents and visitors, is that no permit will be required. So, the difference between that and the threshold for major special events will be these events occur outside of the areas designated for minor special events on the site plan. These events will require, or will be caused by the closure of public and private roads. And a separate shared parking study will be required for each major special event called for and created. And a permit will also be required for the major special event. And that's why the intention is there's no more than a few a year for the major special events. And as you can see on the right, you have the types of these special events, such as movie nights, car shows, if you wanna touch on that. Food trucks, and really activities for everyone to consistently enjoy.
And this, that's really important, because a major event would be something like... Well, I mean, like, uh, you know, this is gonna be very famous, Senator. You might have reelection campaigns for senators or governors. You might have a car show with, they do this Cars and Coffee's in Palm Beach, and they get, you know, fifteen hundred cars and takes up the whole, that would be a major event. So, that type, any of those that are gonna create problems for the village, we would come in. But when we're having movies or yoga in the park, or Chris, you know, well, a major event would be the Christmas tree lighting ceremony, because it'd be fifteen thousand people there. But like, when we're having yoga on the mat or movie night, or, you know, the little concerts in the parks, stuff like that, those don't require, because they don't close any public roads. It's just, it's also very important.
And so, if I could just check my understanding, then when we look at the site plan, we'll know where the minor events are.
Correct. And this is actually sort of a representation of that. Glad you asked that. Because the site plan will be marked with a special regulating sheet that depicts where the focus of the minor special events are to occur. So, similar to the area that you see highlighted here, the site plan submittal would depict that area as a minor special event area. And again, anything occurring outside of that would trigger the major special event.
Yeah, for example, we have enough pathway to have a three-point-five K walk, so we can have all these charity events on Saturday mornings, you know, Walk for the Whales, Walk for the Dogs, Walk for the Dogs That Like Whales. And those will require much bigger areas, so that would be a major event. But this here, everything is in the park, it's surrounded by the buildings, and it's isolated from everything.
And to touch on a few more special regulations that are created by the MXS zoning code, I just went over the form-based code stuff, so now we're getting into just the more specific regulations. As far as ride share in our conversations with staff, we came to the number of minimum ten percent required spaces are to be identified as ride-share spaces for any future trends in mobility and offering that flexibility. An average of twenty-five percent of the frontage on the first floor of all parking garages shall incorporate retail or office businesses that are to be developed in that storefront style, as depicted in that early regulating plan. And this is also to further enhance the architecture of the parking garages, that they don't stick out, and that they're really consistent with the character of the remainder of the MXS.
Did I have a question? So, did you say the parking structures are going to have commercial on the first floor?
Correct, yes. Yeah, minimum twenty-five percent will have to have, um...
Okay. And then we discussed a few years ago that they're building parking structures today to be converted into homes, because there's gonna be less cars. So, are you building these parking structures with that thought process, or they will stay as parking structures?
There's been a lot of studies, and to build a structure that can be converted is not economical. It's, if it doesn't work, it's actually cheaper just to tear them down and rebuild them. So, we actually tried to do that, and the numbers just don't work.
And then lastly, transit, we are writing in the code that a minimum of one mass transit and multimodal facility shall be located at the intersection of two collector or local streets within the MXS development. And this is to leverage the opportunities of, you know, bus rapid transit, micro-mobility, ride-share, and all of these items to really encourage, you know, not only do you get the mix of uses with residential, non-residential, entertainment, recreation, but you also have the transit capabilities to sort of carry that on. And then finally signage, we discussed signage, and that'll be more specified in the site plan, but we're permitted, um, the typical signs allowed in the code as far as the height and width with the freestanding signs and the wall signs. And then also calling for hanging marquee signs, so as pedestrians are walking on that ground floor level, they see in typical mixed-use centers, those signs that extend perpendicular for more visibility. And we're also maintaining an eight-foot vertical clearance from the sidewalk. And that concludes my presentation tonight. If you guys have any questions, I'll be happy to answer. Thank you.
I'm just real quick, gonna piggyback on what Councilman Valente said when he pointed out the examples that you had used. And I'm very familiar with Abacoa and Harborside, and the biggest complaint were the residents who shared the buildings between the commercial and the residential, the noise. So, I'm not asking you to solve the noise problem, I'm asking you to be aware of it.
I, uh, the last thing Mr. Tuttle wants to hear is be in front of this commission arguing about residents, arguing about noise.
So, will you stick around once the project is completed, that we could have access to it?
But what I've done in the master association documents, and Mitty can confirm this, every apartment site, every residence has to sign a waiver before they can move in, that they understand they're living next to a music social center, and that there's loud music played till midnight.
I will tell you right now, all of those people that lived in Abacoa and Harborside signed those agreements and still complained, just like how all the people who moved into Ibis knew that State Road Seven was gonna go through, and they're still complaining. So, that means nothing.
Well, it's an attempt.
So, is there any structural things that could be done to dampen, to reduce transmission of sound?
Let me tell you what you don't see in here. You don't see the sound code. You have an existing sound code that's completely antiquated, because the new way of measuring sound is by the pitch of it. You know, deeper sounds, you have one level and higher sounds the other. We didn't feel it was necessary. I made the decision, I have, it'd take me eighteen months to build this. Once I get it approved and start building it, then we hire sound specialists who go out there and they do sound studies, and then we will present a sound code for our MXS district. But that's step two. So, yes, we will do a specific sound code for our system. And what they do is they go and they set up different speakers, and they put areas and stuff like that. And if you look at the way the whole system's designed, none of our music will head toward older residential communities. It's all pointed out towards southern and to the Kmart, the old Kmart thing. So, I don't believe that's gonna be an issue, plus, you know, our hours of operation aren't that aggressive and stuff like that, so... Oh, I'm...
I want you to make me believe her. That's all I'm asking.
Let me clarify something. Let me clarify something. There's no sound code as it relates to the MXS. We still have surrounding land uses of residential, which do apply. It's just within the MXS, identifying it between uses there would be, the archive does not address.
So, what you're saying is you can't have outdoor entertainment next to a residential?
What I'm saying is that the residential that exists within his, within his planned development and the apartments already exist, those property lines will be subject to our, our sound code.
Exactly. And one other thing, the, you know, we have like my apartments, and Florida Crystal's apartments, and Related's apartments. They have a lot of twos, threes, and townhomes. I designed the apartments over the commercial center that are on the park to be ones and twos with very few threes. I think it's eight percent three bedrooms. They're primarily one bedrooms and two bedrooms, which are against family type. If you have a family and kids, you don't wanna live on that park. You wanna live in the apartments of Related or Florida Crystal's. You know, that's for young professionals, hopefully, who will do less complaining.
Or generating the noise.
What?
Or being generated the noise.
Or being generated the noise. Any other questions?
Any other question for Bradford? To refresh my recollection, as far as the palm trees should be instead royal palms, or...
I would, I would put a, or I would make the recommendation that if there is to be a palm tree for shade tree swap, that it would be a royal palm.
Just royal palm, okay.
Or we would suggest a minimum canopy size, like twenty-foot canopy versus a, you know, he, I know exactly what he's talking about. He doesn't want skimpy little palms. He wants big, massive palms, like a majule, a date palm, a coconut, or a royal.
What we're saying is one for one, as it relates to the canopy via royal. He can still do a three-to-one replacement of canopy. Typically, our code allows three palms for one canopy. So, if it was an other type of palm, it would be, it'd be just three-to-one.
Right, but we're, from what I was hearing from Bradford, though, we're comfortable just with royal palms as opposed to, you know, I'm not a palm expert, but I know there's some big old palms that aren't royal palms, so...
I'd go with royal or a canopy.
You know, I would, I would go with royal palms, just given the, in the past...
Good enough.
That works for me.
But in the, in the past, we've accepted those swaps on landscape waivers, and I haven't seen us do any other swaps with any other palm tree species other than royals.
Thank you.
The other palm with a large canopy is majule, and they cost five times a royal, so...
So, there's this, there's a lot here. There's one percent that we couldn't come to a meeting of the minds on. So, let me tell you that, what that is, and I don't ask you to vote on that today.
And you shouldn't tell us about it today.
Well, I want you to think about it, so we can talk about it at the second reading.
Well, it's in here, so, right? It's in here, so it's fair game, as far as I'm concerned.
Okay, so specifically, we wanted, we don't have any establishments that have over fifty percent liquor, because those are restaurants. If you go over fifty percent liquor, you have to get a different type of liquor license. We would ask for one establishment, six thousand feet or less. We figure out a five-hundred-thousand square feet, we could have one bar, like a Blue Martini. It would be a special exception. They would have to come and present to you what they're gonna do, but we would ask that. That's, that's not in here, that we could have one bar.
Your, your expectation, though, wouldn't be that they would stay open later than one P.M.?
No, no, they have to close at the same hours. And they cannot have any outside music and stuff like that, you know, it's same regulation. So, we would ask that one bar be allowed out of the entire center.
If he's asking us to think of that, may I suggest that he thinks of, because there are plenty of other establishments out there that, because beer and wine are not considered liquor, but that do have a bring-your-own-bottle, and they charge a corkage fee. So, that would not require a liquor license for those establishments.
You wanna say something, Bradford? So, the liquor license that we are speaking of, they, so, it's fifty percent in the sale of food, throughout the sale of the liquor, right? So, what he's asking for is, one, to allow for more than fifty percent, and then also allow for the elimination of the requirement for food to be served throughout the duration of the sale of the alcohol.
We would concur that we would not allow any bottle clubs, if you wanna add that to this. You're right, that's not in here right now. I don't think it is. Is it, Bradford? We could have a bottle club?
No.
No, because...
The hours of operations wouldn't work for that.
Anyways, we would, we would agree with that, so...
We would, we will ponder this.
Well, it's a group, it's not a deal breaker.
So, so what's, what's the pondering process?
We'll talk individually with the manager.
Yeah. Help me understand the pondering process here. So, we're looking at a document, we're gonna act on it right now. That's not in here.
It's not, it's not part of what we're rolling on tonight.
So, we would ask you to amend this, to allow us to have one establishment that allows more than fifty percent liquor sales, less than six thousand feet, that doesn't serve food during...
Let me ask you a question. You mentioned, what was the place you mentioned?
Blue Martini.
Is that in play?
Hundred percent. He lives in the Royal Palm. He love, he's the one that, he lives in, um...
If we agree.
He lives over, what's that, at El Cuchobi in Portisville? No, no.
Portisville?
It doesn't matter, but...
El Cuchobi, four forty. He lives there, and he wants to put one there, and, and I, he's one hundred percent in play, but I can't, I don't wanna make a deal I can't commit to.
And my thought is, from what I'm hearing from the applicant, is just, it's something that's not in here, it was discussed, it's not in this ordinance at this point, but he's making his lobby pitch, hey, maybe this is something we should include in there, and that's, if one of us or some of us wanna do that now, which I'm not comfortable at...
No, I don't think we should, we should do it now, but we should socialize it, discuss it individually with the manager, and see if he can determine if it's a consensus, and he would then present to us, along with Keith, how do we include that, right?
I think it's remarkable to me that that's the only really outstanding issue.
I have to agree with that.
We agreed to the...
Well, that's...
The, the, um, what you guys don't understand, you will have the nicest parking garages in all of South Florida. You, they don't build parking garages twenty-five feet by twenty anymore.
That'll be our new motto, best parking garages in Florida.
I hope we got, I hope we got something more to sell than that, but...
So, go have a drink at the Blue Martini.
Go bring your own bottle, right?
We agreed to all the parking requirements. We agreed to all that stuff.
Yeah, it's a stretch, bit of a stretch there.
I think, listen, I think our staff and your staff and Ray and everyone has worked together very, very well to create what I think is a very comprehensive and cohesive new district that we created here. And this is stuff, you know, continuing to move forward. Let's see now if it gets voted in. If you, you guys have any other questions? Because what I wanna do is open, we have any public comments in advance on this agenda item R eight. Ray, any hands raised?
No, bear.
And I have no public comment card submitted to me, so I'm closing public comment on agenda item R eight. And unless there are additional questions from members on, on the council, oh, there's one thing I'd like to clarify. Is this a double reading? We have to do a second reading?
Yeah.
All right. I'd like to have the record modified to say that this is a public hearing first reading, because that wasn't in our, wasn't in any of that, I didn't say it. And there will be a second reading at the next scheduled council meeting, which will be in December, before Christmas, okay? Having said that, if you make the motion, please include the tree thing, so...
That's my understanding.
Yeah, so, I'm looking for a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve regular agenda item R eight with a revision on section twenty-six dash nine-five-nine subsection C, which sets forth the landscaping standards, and the specific language is, it currently reads, one palm... one palm tree may be substituted in lieu of one canopy tree. And I would suggest the amendment, the one royal palm tree may be substituted in lieu of one canopy tree.
Very well done.
Second.
We have a motion in the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We have no opposed. Chris, please let the record show that agenda item R8 as amended. No, yeah, right. Was approved 5-0 at its first reading. Okay? Now, we have one more agenda item. Not done yet. Yeah, there was an edit, there was a late edit. Agenda item R9 is an adoption of resolution 22-36 of resolution of the Village Council of Village Royal Palm Beach, Florida approving the sale of approximately .235 acres of village-owned property. East parcel to Artemis Investments and approximately .235 acres of village-owned property. West parcel to AMG Business Enterprises LLC pursuant to section 2-3 of the Village Code of Ordinances and pursuant to the agreements for the purchase and sale of real property dated September 1, 2022 and August 29, 2022 respectively, providing an effective date and for other purposes. I guess there was a reason why this had to come back tonight, right?
Yes, as we were getting the closing documents together for a closing soon, I think before the end of the month. One of the items that we needed was a resolution approved by council and we didn't have that yet, so we added it to it to include it. So that our closing documents are complete. And if you remember, one of our requirements was they both close at the same time. We didn't, because we were splitting this piece of property, we didn't want to sell it separately and something happening. So this was a document we needed to get the closing to happen all together.
Okay. Any questions? Comments? Counsel? No?
My only comment would be to think, pretty impressive job, Mr. Mayor. Looking in, I remember looking back at this thing and I, when you came up with Solomon split the baby, I was like, okay, I wasn't too hopeful. And I had an entirely different mind about the way that was gonna go, but I was, good, good job. It was a very good suggestion. Thank you.
Chris, any advanced comments from the public on agenda item R9? Ray, any, any hands raised?
No mayor.
I don't see anyone here from the applicants. I guess they're okay with everything. I don't have any public comment cards submitted on agenda item R9, so I'm closing public comment. Unless there are comments from council, I'll look for a motion.
Motion to approve regular agenda item number nine.
Have a motion in the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, Chris, let the record show that agenda item R9 was approved 5-0. We have no further business before us this evening, so we stand adjourned. Thank you.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Happy Thanksgiving, yes.